I'll convene the regular meeting. As we prepare to do the silent invocation and the pledge of allegiance, just a couple of things I'd like to call to your attention and to remember during this time. Of course, we would like to remember our countrymen in Hawaii and the devastating fires that they've dealt with over there and the challenges that they face. So if we could keep them on mind as we spend some time in Southern invocation. The other is, and we've probably heard about the retired San Jose Police Department Captain, Captain Schrefer, Schrefer, who was killed in automobile accident just about two weeks ago or so, if I'm not mistaken. His wife works for the Morgan Hill Unified School District, and it's been a devastating event that's occurred, and we'd like to keep that family in our thoughts as well. So go ahead and let's do the silence invocation and then the pledge of allegiance. Okay, thank you. You have a pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Constitution. One is to honor God, the end of this world with liberty and justice. Okay, we've got some recognitions that we would like to do this evening. We would certainly like to, um, the first one, we are going to recognize an Independence Day celebrations team. Is, uh, is Matt here? Matt?
And as the mayor moves up there, happy birthday, Karen.
Is today your birthday? Wow, happy birthday. We're going to recognize you as well. That's right. I'd like to say to the City of Morgan Hill, recognize as the Independence Day celebrations team for their outstanding success for the 2023 Freedom Fest. If you had been a part of that, you saw how everything was just perfect. Birthday's really brought the community together for a great celebration. Others throughout the region also participated. And so we are grateful to you and all that you guys have done. We know it's a lot of work and we want to thank you and recognize you for your efforts. And so there you go. Want to say a few words?
I'd love to. So obviously, it's not myself, it's the whole team. We also wanted to say thank you to the entire city council and city staff. I see Chris all the way in the back. We actually have something for you as well. Many of you are volunteers as well as city leaders. So we actually have one of our pins that I'm going to be handing to each of you. We make commemorative pins made by our own Marine Hunt, and we're going to give you each one of those pins. But again, thank you to the community. Thank you to the city council and the mayor for all of your support. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Thank you.
Thank you. Happy birthday.
Oh, well, thank you.
Thanks, Matt. Thank you.
Thank you. It was a lot of fun. Thank you. Nice, Karen.
Thank you.
And then we have one more proclaiming the celebration of women's rights to vote and Women's Equality Day. On August 26th, 1920, the 19th Amendment to the U.S. Constitution extended the vote to women, a significant victory for the women's rights and gender equality movement. And on the 101st anniversary of the 19th Amendment, Women's Equality Day, we celebrate the progress that has been made towards securing women's full participation in our democracy and renew our commitment to securing equal rights, freedoms, and opportunities for all women. And the City of Morgan Hill, it is its citizens to recognize the value promoting a broad-based agenda to ensure that Morgan Hill is making swift and appropriate progress in ensuring that women have the necessary support to succeed in the workforce, have equal opportunities to succeed in higher education, and have equitable access to quality, affordable healthcare without discrimination. And in honor of the celebration's inclusiveness and diversity and keeping with the goals of the city council, the City of Morgan Hill would like to recognize August 22nd through the 29th, 2023, as a celebration of women's right to vote in Morgan Hill, enjoying and recognizing and ensuring equity to the women who work and volunteer and contribute to our city and community in every way. All right, so we are now going to move on to city council reports, and we're going to go with city council member Martinez Beltran.
Thank you, Mayor. It's great to be back. I hope everybody had a great summer. Um, it was busy. I'm going to start off, there's a couple of things that I did get to get to. Uh, I was happy enough to attend the inauguration of our new Speaker of December, Robert Rivas, in Sacramento. I also attended in Salinas, and it's a great honor to see him in that position. I'm really excited and hopeful that we'll be able to work and have a strong voice from our region in Sacramento. I also attended the league, I think a lot for the league, actually, this summer. We had our housing and housing, community and economic development committee, as well as all of the other committees, which are public safety, transportation. There's lots of different committees that the committee has, and I served as the vice chair on their housing committee. And so I went down to Pomona in LA and attended there for the different policy committees. Um, I also went to the, on the league, they have different caucuses, a women's caucus, Latino caucus, um, business caucus. I serve on the Latino caucus, and I'm on their executive board, and we had our mid-year retreat in Monterey. So I attended that as well. And I had a chance as well to connect with our new, some remember Gail Pellerin. So there were some really good conversations that got to happen over that time. I also wanted to share that in celebration of Women's Equality Day, which is on the 26th, this will be the fifth annual, we'll have a South County, Women's Equality Series that we do, and we'll be walking in downtown on the 26th. So hopefully you'll be there already for our Doggy Days. Come join us at 1:30, we'll be under the big tree by Chachos and Cuckoats. We'll take a little stroll around and then come back and hear from some of the different walkers. And then on 8/29, which is next Tuesday, we'll have a panel on mental health and the impacts it has on families and youth and how you can navigate resources for them. And that'll be at 6:00 PM at the Cultural Center.
Thank you. Thank you, council member. Now for city manager's report, Christina.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, the community, my teammates that are here. Wanted to share with you the very exciting news that our, our Saturdays start this weekend. So let me get my notes here. So we're calling them our fourth Saturday Downtown Street Series. And so this is the first of three downtown activations. And so it's this Saturday, August 26th. And the first one is called Doggy Days of Summer, and it goes from 10 to 4. And so we invite you to bring your dog and enjoy dog agility courses, a splash zone, meet and greet park, as well as a pet contest. You can also shop 40 dog-themed vendors while enjoying live music from a few bands. And there'll also be a Kid Zone games and a free outdoor movie night in the evening on Third Street. And that's going to be from 8 to 10, and we're going to be featuring pets, too. Thank you. That concludes my report.
Thank you. City Attorney's Report, Mr. Larkin.
Mr. Mayor, the council met in closed session, both at the end of the last meeting on a item of threatened litigation. And this evening, before this meeting, on labor negotiations, there was no replayable action from either of the closed sessions.
Are there any other council reports? Councilmember Borjoli.
Sorry? Yes, thank you, Mayor. So I'd like to report on an outrageous post on Nextdoor that was filled with lies and misinformation that is extremely harmful to our community. He calls the three city council members hypocrites using those exact words and says, "We put vested interests over public interest." This is a total lie. He says, "Very often, we just make up facts" and then spews misinformation to support his misguided views. He goes on to say, "Unelected public employees give vested interest in their political muscle to whatever they want to, myself and two other city council members," and continues to say, "We just make up stuff and do whatever we're told by staff." Again, this type of misinformation is so harmful to our community. I don't take orders from, from staff members, and I don't, uh, they don't dictate anything to me. I make all decisions based on factual data in front of me. And if you don't like that, well, that's just too bad. But stop spreading the lies and misinformation. It's extremely harmful to our community. Thank you.
Thank you, council member. Anyone else report? If not, I've got a few things to report on. Caltrain, the first train to South County will begin on September 25th. It's something that we have been working on for many years now. And of course, the mantra now is four trains, four lanes. We're hoping to get a fourth lane on 101, and we'll continue to work in that direction. Caltrain has also received funding for a demonstration pilot program, Caltrain, to run a battery-equipped engine so that when it leaves San Jose, where the track is no longer electrified, this battery-operated unit will then provide the necessary power to bring that into South County. And then again, for us, reducing the greenhouse gas emissions. Now, that's probably three to five years away, but the funding, and it's a good first step. The funding has now been made available to Caltrain. I sent a LAFCO board, LAFCO, in the last meeting, agreed to allow Gilroy to annex a portion of the land that they had requested. Gilroy has not put forth a, a request to LAFCO for more than 10 years. And so this was, I think, a win for, for them. The Cities Association, Marilyn and I, council member Lebers and I, attended a symposium on affordable housing, and that was held up at the county offices in San Jose. With regard to the Silicon Valley Regional Interoperability Authority, a board and other board I sit on, the only really reportable action there was we interviewed and hired new legal counsel for the organization. And then, of course, for some community pride, you have no doubt been hearing more about the Bay Area Panthers. We have, the team has won the indoor football league championship. We have the team photographer here in the, in the, he's in the back of the room. There was a parade in celebration on August 11th. And as many of you know, they have put out on RFP, they're looking at other options in other cities. It looks like Sacramento and Oakland are probably the most competitive with us, but I've been working very closely with San Jose Mayor Matt Mahan and the CEO of the Sharks, Jonathan Becker, in order to do our best to try to keep the team here headquartered in Morgan Hill and then also playing at the SAP Center in San Jose. That wraps up my report, and if there are no other reports, then we will move on. Public comment. The opportunity for public comment is for items that are not on the agenda. If you'd like to make comments on an item that is on the agenda, please wait until we get to that item to offer your comments. Members of the public are entitled to address the city council concerning any item within the Morgan Hill City Council's subject matter jurisdiction. Public comments are limited to no more than three minutes. Except for a cer- except for certain specific exceptions, the city council is prohibited from discussing or taking action on any items not appearing on the posted agenda. Public comment is intended for comments. Questions posed during public comment are not generally answered. If you have questions, please send them to the city clerk at ccpubliccomment@morganhill.ca.gov to receive a response. With the adoption of the agenda, can I get a motion to adopt the agenda as posted? Motion to approve. Is there any public, we just blew right through that. Hey, we're just assuming there's no public comment. Please forgive me. Thank you for that. Do we have any, anyone public comment?
Yes, Kathy Chavez Napoli.
Thank you.
This is for tall people. Good evening, Mayor, City Council, and community. I would like to share with you some information. First, I did pass out this flyer that I think you all have a copy of. And I think it's important to, to note, since most of us said the pledge of allegiance, and we talked about a nation for liberty and justice for all. But I just passed this out so that you could see, this is a little girl who was sold for a bottle of whiskey and a pound of gunpowder. I am a Native American from California, and I would like to read the land acknowledgement statement. A land acknowledgement is a formal statement that recognizes and respects Indigenous peoples as traditional stewards of this land and the enduring relationship that exists between Indigenous people and their traditional territories. Despite being murdered, kidnapped, raped, and ignored, we are still here. And so this land acknowledgement acknowledges that we are still here, and we ask that you remember that we are here. That is all, nothing else. We acknowledge the Amamutsen, who are the traditional stewards of the land on which we work and live, and recognize their continuing connection to the land, water, and air that the Morgan Hill Historical Society and all of the City of Morgan Hill sits on. We pay respect to the Amamutsen and to their elders, past, present, and emerging. As these words of acknowledgement are spoken and heard, the ties that the Amamutsen have to their traditional homelands are renewed and reaffirmed. My tribe, Amadu, from the, uh, mountain Amadu from the Susanville area, this statement really does apply to every, every Native American in the Latino community who are also Indigenous to all of the Americas. Thank you.
Thank you, Kathy. Is there anyone else?
Yes, Chris Tremaine.
Good evening, Mayor Turner, and members of the city council. My name is Chris Tremaine, and I'm here today to bring to your attention a nuisance disturbance caused by a rooster residing in our residential neighborhood. It was my hope that the council will adopt and amend to prohibit roosters from residential zone properties. My neighbor started keeping chickens about nine to six years ago, and three and a half years ago, she got a rooster, and it crows incessantly. Like most, I thought roosters crowed a little in the morning. That's not the case. They crow on and off all day long. We have tried mediation with our neighbor to no avail. The police have come out and warned or fined the rooster's owner on numerous occasions. Animal Control asked us to keep a log of the time and length and crows of the rooster, which I have all this. Uh, I do have recordings from the rooster, and I've been told that we cannot, the police have told us they cannot enforce the laws regarding the rooster, and we must take legal action ourselves. Most of the cities surrounding us have prohibited roosters in residential neighborhoods, including Gilroy, Hollister, San Juan Batista, Salinas, San Jose, and more. My husband, husband and I are both retired and spend most of our days at home. So we are stuck with the choice of closing all the doors and windows so the rooster doesn't interrupt our lives or stop what we're doing when he is crowing. This rooster's crowing is denying us peace and enjoyment of our home. While some might think the presence of a rooster charming or even nostalgic, I assure you, it is not. And if it was your neighbor, you would not think so either. Please consider adopting the same ordinance as the neighboring cities to ban roosters from residential zoned areas. Thank you very much for your attention and your consideration.
Thank you, Chris.
And I do have a recording if anybody's interested in hearing it.
I hear Renee crowing all the time. I think I got it. Just to, uh, but thank you for that. We do have, uh, we will have that on the November 15th council agenda.
Okay, thank you.
Note, a note to you. Thank you. Is there?
Judy McAndras. She wanted to speak about the roosters also. So since it's on the agenda, she just wanted.
It is on the November 15th agenda. You're welcome to say a few words.
Okay. Good evening, Mayor Turner, members and residents of Morgan Hill. I live closest to this rooster, and the noise that he makes is unbearable. Like Chris said, I have my doors, my windows, I have blinds shut, and I can hear him in every room in my house. The only place I can't hear him is when I'm taking a shower. The reason that I'm here is because we've been working on this for three and a half years, and nothing has happened. And we just don't know where to go, know what to do about it. As an example, my granddaughter, I picked her up when she was in the sixth grade from school and brought her home. And she says, "I'm going to go up to my room, Grandma, and work on my report." And she came down about 20 minutes later and said, "Grandma, I can't do this here. Can you take me home? That thing outside is screaming." So, you know, you cannot concentrate on anything that you do. Even when you're paying bills, that thing is screaming in your head. And it's not a nice, mild rooster crow. It's a high-pitched squeal. My, I have had nobody come to my house for the last three and a half years. They've came, had to listen to the rooster and said, "Yeah, we'll go to my house next time." So I have had no friends, no family, anybody come to my house. So it's really affected me. And I know Chris is the same way. It's, you can't have people at your house and enjoy it. You know, I used to go outside when I first moved into this track and drink coffee in the morning and listen to the birds chirping and singing. And it's just beautiful. The track is really a nice track. I bought the house 27 years ago, and for 24 years, we had no problems. But the last three and a half, everything's changed. So you take a cup of coffee out to the backyard, and what do you hear? The rooster crow, and that's it. All the birds have disappeared. And it's, it's just a shame that they've let this go on for so long. And it affects Chris and I the most because we're retired, and our houses are, you know, we share fences with them. But, um, people will come by and say, "Is that rooster in your backyard?" And I'm going, "No, it's over there." And they said, "Well, I can hear it." To them, they work. Everybody works. I worked up until six years ago when I retired, so I never heard any of the chickens or the rooster. The rooster wasn't there then. But, um, it's just not fair that we have to put up with this condition and a rooster that, you know, just moved in and he gets top priority the last three and a half years. And right before the Fourth of July parade.
Coming up on your time.
I got infested by fleas because they moved their chicken coop.
And I'm going to have, I'm going to have to stop you right there. Yep, thank you.
Yeah.
Is there anyone else for public comment?
Susan Davis-Rick.
Mayor, council members.
Yeah. We moved here about two years ago, so we're still fairly new in the area. During that time, I've noticed that the traffic on East Dunn, which is where we live in El Dorado community, is just like a racetrack. And it's just getting worse and worse. And I'm somebody who likes to be outside and exercising and taking my dogs for walks. And it has just gotten unbelievably scary out there. And the crosswalks that we have that we're to utilize in our area do not have any lights on them. So the drivers just basically ignore us altogether, and you're just running for your life. And at my age, it's kind of like if I trip or something, you know, then that's it. So we would like to ask that we have lights included on those crosswalks at El Dorado and, what's it, Monte Vineyard, I think it's.
Yeah, the Crosswalks, Claret and Cossahara. It's four lanes. There is a medium there, but there's crosswalks going on one side of each of the street there. There is a sign, crosswalk, but people ignore it.
Yeah.
We've been in there many times, which one car would stop? And then there's still another lane, and we kind of, you know, we, we're cautious, but yet people just go right on through. They don't stop.
Or there have been instances where someone who stopped was rear-ended by another car because they didn't, they don't even know it's there, you know, because there are no lights. And then most recently on Saturday, I was almost hit in the crosswalk over by Saddleback. You know, um, close to where that accident occurred at the end of June, because people, again, are just speeding through there. So the driver, she slowed down, so I continued to walk. And then as soon as I was in front of her car, she just floored it. And I don't know why. I cannot understand. But, and she was an older person. But, you know, I'm thinking that if the lights had been on, then maybe that could have, you know, alerted her that this was a crosswalk. I don't know what she was thinking, but really serious issues going on on East Dunn.
Very good. Thank you. We appreciate that.
Thank you. Okay.
Thank you.
Robert Zapata.
Good evening, Mayor, and council members. I am, uh, I've been raised in Gilroy, so I'm not from Morgan Hill, but I do appreciate me allowing to speak here today. I did want to bring up two interesting topics. And the first is regarding the Maui fires in Hawaii. Uh, it's an absolute, uh, it's devastating what happened there. I'm sure everyone is aware that a lot of locals are really struggling. And I don't even want to say it's unfortunate. It's, it's more, it's, it's absolutely horrific what happened. And I do want to mention a few things that are, uh, not coincidental, in my opinion, which is that the fire started on August 8th, which is 8:08. I can't put in a date. And the area code for Hawaii is 808. Not only that, but a lot of the locals have been nagged, to put it in perspective, about their property being bought by large hedge funds and insurance companies. And some of those companies are BlackRock, Vanguard, State Street, and a few others, which are huge, uh, corporations that own a lot of wealth. It is very interesting how they are super invested in that area, yet the locals didn't want to sell it to them. And all of a sudden, now after the fire, is open, available, which is terrible. And it seems kind of like an opportunity for them, not for the locals who have to suffer. And many children are missing, and yet the governor there doesn't want to know anything about it. I also wanted to bring up, uh, a matter that is global as well, which is that COVID is returning. And I speak for myself, and I'm not sure how others feel about this, but I am going to refuse to comply with any mandates, restrictions, or lockdowns because that was a huge infringement of our First Amendment. They closed churches, they closed small businesses. Yet the big box stores were available, uh, open as per usual. Business just ran the largest transfer of wealth in human history during that time. And it seems like they're just trying to do it again. So I just want everyone to be aware of that and to be cautious of the global elite that want to take over. Thank you.
Thank you, Robert. Anyone else?
And I have Jennifer Blalock on Zoom.
Good evening, everybody. I have a couple of topics I want to touch on quickly. Uh, the first is appropriately is Nextdoor. So, um, I agree that there is misinformation on Nextdoor, of course, because these are people having discussions. I think there, it's worth paying attention to what is being discussed. Um, I'm also a person who enjoys facts, and I like to make informed decisions. Now, when I contacted the City of Morgan Hill to find out what council members had voted in favor or against pieces of business brought before them, there was no comprehensive record. I was told that I would need to go through all the meeting minutes to find out what the agenda item was and who voted for or against. So I think that as a city, as an evolving city, that information should be made readily available to your residents. Um, after all, the proof is in the pudding. Okay, enough about that. The second topic I want to bring up is that on Nextdoor, you'll see a bunch of people saying, "Oh, it's Sacramento that is allowing this out-of-control growth." And what they mean by, what we all mean by out-of-control growth is growth that is not supported by infrastructure and that there is no money or vision, uh, let's say, should I say executable vision for that infrastructure development. I just wanted to make sure that everybody understood. that Sacramento looks at our regional housing needs allocation, which is an eight year cycle of building of residences from twenty fifteen to twenty twenty two. Morgan Hill exceeded the mandated amount by three hundred and thirty eight percent. We aren't even halfway through the first year of the next cycle. And the city, based on its pipeline, is looking at a hundred and seventy five percent of, um, you know, of what the, of Sacramento is telling them to build, telling the city of Morgan Hill to build. So let's be honest and let's be correct. And, um, I, uh, hope that everybody who hears this will go and look at the Morgan, look at the Morgan Hill city site and you'll see that I'm just quoting statistics from the city of Morgan Hill. Thank you for listening to me. Good night.
Hmm. Anyone else?
No further speakers.
All right. With that, then, we will do the adoption of the agenda. Can I get a motion to adopt, uh, the agenda as posted?
So we've made the motion earlier.
You did make the motion. We'll go with Councilmember Borjoli, second with, uh, Councilmember Spring. All in favor?
Aye.
All of any opposed? None. That motion passes. Uh, now for the consent calendar, is any council members wishing to pull an item from the consent calendar? Marilyn, I mean, Councilmember Lee, forgive me.
Item number eight.
Item number eight. Okay. Anyone else? Councilmember Spring?
Yeah, I, I probably not number five and yeah, num- number five and, and actually I, I would propose that we move that after agenda item number fifteen. It's to me, they're kind of tied to each other. Based upon the discussion we had at the last meeting. Uh, unless the majority members that voted in favor of it say, I'm not going to change my mind anyways, then commute point.
Well, uh, I would like to personally keep it where it is, uh, and we'll deal with that. Uh, if you were pulling that item, we can pull that. I don't know if you have.
Right. I, I don't know if I need to pull it. I, I definitely want to be recorded as a no vote.
Okay.
Regardless of what it stands, but to me it would make sense to have the discussion if we reopen it after agenda item number fifteen.
Mayor, I was gonna pull that, but I thought there would be probably multiple people who are gonna pull it, so.
Were you saying you want to pull the item?
Yeah, I mean, if we're not pulling it for Councilmember Spring, then I'm happy to pull it.
Oh, I'm suggesting to pull it.
Okay, so we'll pull the item, uh, and you are, you, you have a comment or question about it, or is that what your comment was as far as moving it to another location in the agenda?
That's my proposal, move it to after agenda item number fifteen.
Second that.
Okay. Uh, I'm in favor of leaving it where it is. Um, and so I don't know how others feel about that. Um.
What's the item number?
Item number five.
Item two, we're ships.
Is the, um, any of the, um, that land use regulations for the commercial zoning?
Oh, um, I think it's okay where it is, you know, so.
Okay. All right. Then we're going to leave it where it is. Um.
Can we have a vote on that, please?
Yes, absolutely. Would you like to go ahead and make the motion?
I, I.
He did.
Since this evening.
Yep.
We're following Sturgis' rules of order. I think we take Councilmember Martinez Beltran's motion as a motion to table. And we take the second as a second to that motion.
Okay.
And so what you're voting on is a motion to table the item five till, until after item fifteen.
Got it. Okay. That being the motion, all in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed?
Me.
No, that fails three to two. So, um.
So it's still pulled from the agenda because it only takes one council member to do that. So we get the rest of the consent and then.
Okay. So we have pulled items five and item eight. Any other items? Then let's, if we could, get a motion to approve the consent calendar minus item five and eight. So I got a mo- uh, motion by Councilmember Spring.
Second.
Second by Councilmember Borjoli. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? None. That passes, uh, unanimously. Okay. So with, uh, item, we'll go with item five. Um, who we have come forward and talk about that for us.
Do we also have public comment on this item? Is that correct? I'd like to have a full report, to be clear.
Yes, me too.
I'm sorry, you did what?
I didn't. I didn't receive a card.
Oh, I'm sorry. Okay. Public comment on the consent calendar. Forgive me. Okay.
Yeah, yes, I have two for item five. Okay. And I just heard a request for a report.
Okay, so we'll move forward with that.
Okay.
And I'm going to ask, uh, Ms. Mencera to provide that report.
Thank you. Um, at the June twenty first, twenty twenty three city council meeting, a majority of the city council voted to introduce two, three, four, seven, amending the zoning code to allow vehicle related uses and other compatible uses on minimum one acre lots. Following that action, the ordinance was published in the newspaper of general circulation in accordance with the law. The report before you is to adopt ordinance two, three, four, seven.
Very good. Yes.
Oh, God.
Councilmember Spring.
Uh, uh, thank you, ma'am. Yes, the, the reason I, I would have liked to have the discussion later on was, uh, when we voted and during the vote, the, I think it was our city attorney then kind of, uh, made a suggestion, well, with, with design guidelines. Uh, uh, we could then probably handle, uh, the how large, uh, the dealerships could be on those two properties that we voted on, uh, uh, or that the majority, uh, then voted on, on approving. Uh, since then, at least to me, and I don't want to have the other discussion, but it has become pretty clear, uh, we cannot stop that, that no design line will, will, will stop that, that what I think, uh, was, what was a response to one of my council members' questions. And so, so I don't know if that changes someone's mind, but uh, it's just very clear the design guidelines will, will not change anything that some might, might have hoped, some of my colleagues.
Thank you. Are we going to, are we having a presentation?
If there's no questions, then, uh, we would turn it over to public comment.
Okay, so with that, yeah.
Okay.
Let's go.
Yes, um, I'm one of the council members that, uh, Councilmember Spring was talking about. I want to be clear that per our city attorney, if we have the guidelines, they, a developer, it's more than just a suggestion. It's something they must adhere to. Is it likely correct?
So a developer that comes in for a, it's developer that comes in and wants to build an auto dealer in, well, in any of the commercial zones at this point, that based on these guidelines, um, has to show compliance with the guidelines and we'll talk in more detail when we get to that item on the agenda. But to answer the explicit question, um, what is flexibility within the guidelines, but the guidelines are are what the planning commission would use in order to determine whether or not to issue a site and design agreement. And so the, the planning commission looks at both site and those guidelines and determines whether applicant meets them. This is not a housing project, so we don't, they're not objective standards. The planning commission can be subjective in applying those guidelines. And so the idea is um, that the planning commission would have the ability to look at the auto dealer and say, here are the issue, here are the areas of these design guidelines. We don't think you're meeting, um, you're either, you know, and, and, and then, um, force changes. There are other tools that we would use to force changes and we'll talk about those when we get to the item as well.
Okay.
Okay. And would it, after planning commission's done their thing, okay, and I guess everybody's in agreement, it passes through them, does it come back to us again?
Not automatically. Um, any council member could ask to see the item. So any, any council member could ask to review the set and design that's been, um, you know, approved or denied. Uh, with denial, it would probably come on appeal, but, um, but it, it can ask to see the item. Um, or, um, a member of the public can appeal, the, the developer can appeal to the city council as well.
Okay, so I could ask to have it agendized.
Yes.
And when would I do that? After planning commission approves it?
After planning commission made a decision.
Okay. I understand. Thank you for the clarification.
Before we go any further, I just want to make sure, uh, we're going to get a presentation. Is that correct? Are we going to get a presentation on this? It's been.
Well, you're going to get a presentation on the design guidelines. This is.
On the design guidelines. This is, okay.
I was more on the theory of it.
Okay, very good. All right.
Thank you.
Uh, Councilmember, uh, Martinez Beltran.
Thank you, and thank you for the opportunity, um, to speak at this. I still say that, you know, I'm not, I'm not satisfied with, the report has nothing to do with, she's excellent and wonderful. I would like, and I'm requesting that we have a full report, like the presentation for all of the people who are sitting here, our public, and to review this. I remember this item, it actually has sat like me all summer long, um, because it is something that will change, change Morgan Hill quite, um, in grandest way. Uh, and so I think that we need to give it the merit and the time that it deserves. And we had a discussion at length for over an hour. I went back and looked over an hour. We all talked about it. That I had confusion on my part. There was, you know, there were lots of questions. It was a motion made that we, we had consensus with the council to move forward to. What can ask, I had asked actually in the very beginning. I'm not placing blame because also I was very, like I said, there was some confusion on my part. I wanted to be very clear that with, um, with that item, if we were to take a certain action, did that mean that we were able to limit how many auto dealerships we would have at the entrance of Morgan Hill? And we were told at that time that there really wasn't any way to do that. So when I had asked for some, some, um, you know, for some legal standing on that, an hour, over an hour later of discussion, we're about to vote. And at that point, um, one of the council members was confused and, and trying to figure out, you know, what did that mean? At that point, it was suggested, uh, that the design guidelines would be able to prohibit that. And so that was taken as, as fact, that was taken as that's, that's what would happen. And we move forward with the vote and that was enough to tip someone. Again, this was in the last maybe two minutes of over an hour conversation that we had. And, um, then we've now, I'll probably have lots of time to, to look at this and understand that the design guidelines are not able to prevent, um, dealerships coming, all, you know, coming and, and, and taking over that, those entire two acres. Um, taking the majority of those acres, taking, you know, a big portion of the acres because none of that was anything that this council wanted. And if you go back and look at the video, it's very clear there. So I would like to have the presentation done. I would like to have us understand what exactly this is. I, I do hope, I, I hope that, you know, maybe that will, you can consider that and think about what that means. Because once we do this to our small little Morgan Hill, um, we can't change it. We can't change it by design. We can't design our way out of it. I'm an urban planner. I started in architecture. So I was a great architect, but you can't design away out of, uh, you know, twenty nine acres of auto dealerships. So, um, I hope we can get that presentation.
Hey, any other, uh, comments by council? If there are none, we'll go to, uh, public comment. I'd like to open public comment. Any.
We may not be having a presentation. Do we not have staff? So, um, we are providing a presentation for item fifteen related to the auto dealer guidelines. Um, if it's the will of the council to have us re-present what we did on June twenty first, then what I just would recommend is just take a vote. And if that's the vote to have us re-present, you know, we'll pull up the PowerPoint from June twenty first and we'll have our economic development team.
Yeah, I'm not, I'm not so inclined to do a, a, because it will be an hour long presentation. I don't know that. It may not, it may not, or may, it could possibly change votes. I don't know that that's the case. Uh, I think going through an entire hour long presentation and conversation, uh, isn't necessarily going to change. I think there are some people here in the public who are looking to make comments that probably might have greater impact than a the very same presentation we saw back in June.
With all respect, the, the presentation wasn't an hour. The discussion was an hour. I think the presentation was maybe fifteen minutes. I, I hope we could spare that so that people are educated on what they'd be commenting on.
All right. And item fifteen, when we were talking about this at the last meeting, they didn't have a set list of what the guidelines were. And now in item fifteen, they're going to present those and that will be the presentation that will probably satisfy me personally as to what we're talking about. So yes, I want a presentation, but yes, I can wait till fifteen.
Fifteen was on the design guidelines. The presentation we had in June was on the zoning.
True, very true. But in order for me to make a decision on zoning, I wanted to make sure I had the guidelines locked into. I see them as going hand in hand. It's not a free for all where they have twenty six acres to put whatever they want and as many as they want. So now that I see the guidelines, I'd like to see more of a presentation on that. Um, I stand where I was, that it's a, the zoning, I stand on the change, yes. But I want more guidelines on what will be there.
I think that's what Councilmember Spring was suggesting, why we would pair them together. We could hear the design guidelines and then we visit number five, which I thought was a great.
Understood. I think we're going to stick with it as it is and we're going to deal with it right here. Councilmember Borjoli?
Yeah, I, I, I'm not sure I understand. We, we voted on this already. So with, I'm not sure why we want to bring it back to the council.
Um, right.
Un- unless there's something substantial. And I, I didn't hear in the presentation that, uh, a, a proposed dealership would take all of the acreage and do the whole acreage. I, I did not hear that in the presentation. Nor did anybody say that. So I don't know where this, the dealership is going to take over the whole thing came from. I, I think I know where it came from. Uh, but, uh, I, I, I'm just concerned that, um, this is, uh, really blown out of proportion. And, uh, I think we're going to do the right thing, um, as a council and ensure that that doesn't happen when it comes before us. So I don't, I don't see a problem. Um, you know, there, and then plus, I'm, and I admit it, I'm, I'm for businesses. Businesses drive revenue. We need revenue to, um, you know, um, uh, make sure we have, uh, police, fire, EMS and, and a dealership. And we talked about this at that last meeting, brings in two and a half police officers. So yeah, I'm, I'm for bringing in a dealership. Um, because it will help us to bring in revenue for safety of our city, i.e. police offices. So I, I wanted to make that clear also, since everybody is somehow making everything clear.
I appreciate that. We are going to, we are not going to do a presentation and we are now going to go to public comment. So with that being said, do we have anyone, uh, wishing to make comment on this item?
Yes, uh, Mr. Mayor, I do have Miguel Jimenez and his wife is online and she'd like to cede him one minute, if that's.
Sure, absolutely.
Okay, Miguel.
I have the slides, sir.
I do.
Well, there goes one minute. Now, you're ready. Take it down.
Thanks. Just waiting for the slides. Thanks for your, thanks, sorry. Thanks for your patience.
No, no worries.
Appreciate it.
Just one sec. There you go.
Great, thank you. Um, good evening. My name is Miguel Jimenez. I'm here to voice my concern about the zoning text amendment that would allow auto related uses on the land zoned administrative office. Uh, if you could go to the next slide, please.
Great. The last time the city council discussed this.
Great. The last time the city council discussed this topic, it was in the very late evening hours of June twenty first. Just to recap, auto dealerships were already in allowed use on the land zone commercial highway colored in red. The zoning text amendment is about expanding auto dealerships, which currently is not in allowed use on the administrative office land colored pink on the map. Based on the discussion that took place that evening, it was clear that a majority of city council did not want twenty nine acres of auto dealerships. Council members Lebers stated, I'm not opposed to an auto dealership coming in. However, I am concerned that if the lavender light pink is rezoned, that we might get a whole bunch of auto dealerships. After council member Lebers and Mayor Turner expressed their concerns about the entire site being used for auto dealerships, attorney Larkin stepped in and proposed directing city staff to develop design guidelines, and I quote, "That would alleviate concerns about twenty nine acres of just auto dealers." This statement by attorney Larkin alleviated the concern of council member Lebers and based on her subsequent comment, and I quote, "So we could technically in the design, limit the number that come into that twenty nine acres." She appeared to be under the impression that design guidelines could somehow prevent all twenty nine acres from being developed with auto dealerships. The zoning text amendment passed three to two, and city staff was directed to propose design guidelines. A member of residents had a meeting with city staff on July thirty first to discuss the design guidelines for auto dealerships. During the meeting, city's development staff confirmed design guidelines could not, could not legally prevent all twenty nine acres from being developed as auto dealerships during the meeting. Earlier today, I pulled the design guidelines for the vehicle dealerships, items fifteen, from the agenda packet and emailed them to you. I don't know if you had a chance to read them, but there's nothing in the design guidelines that prevent all twenty nine acre acres from being developed with auto dealerships. I just want to make sure that we're all on the same page in regards to this issue. The design guidelines can dictate the layout and other aspects of an auto dealership development on this land, but it does not prevent them from being developed on all twenty nine acres. If you could go to the next slide, please. The zoning text amendment would give the landowner the legal right to develop all twenty nine acres for auto dealerships, which include a hundred percent of the administrative office land pink in the previous slide. The Morgan Hill zoning code and general plan determine allowed uses for a parcel of land, not design guidelines. If this zoning change is approved, then no protection will remain to preserve administrative office land for uses the community and city leaders desire as codified in the general plan with the CO designation, such as medical offices. Medical office would still be in allowed use, but if developers can make a larger profit building auto dealerships, that's exactly what they'll do if allowed. Next slide, please. Um, I want to briefly talk about three potential solutions. The first one is just don't approve the zoning text amendment. I think this aligns with a lot of the campaign platforms our recent city council members uh who were elected came on board, such as local control, keeping the small town feeling and charm, infrastructure support, controlled growth. Um, and I think that gives the community the opportunity to really have a transparent view of what might get developed on this site. The next slide, please, is what I proposed on June twenty first, which is just allow a developer the flexibility to develop all twenty nine acres however they want, as long as they retain the proportion of CO and CH zoning. And then the last slide is the simplest, and I think, uh, I hope you at least consider this, add one sentence. Um, if you can go to, sorry, the next, the second to last slide. Um, just add one sentence to the zoning text amendment that says the maximum percentage of land that you would allow the CO, the the pink land to be developed for auto dealerships. It can't be a hundred percent, right? So legally, right now, what's approved? And the question that I would
And ask you to wrap it up.
Yes, the question, uh, council member Lebers, I beg you to ask attorney Larkin is, can these design guidelines legally prevent all twenty nine acres from being developed with auto dealerships?
Thank you, Miguel.
Thank you.
Joe Baranowski.
Good evening. My name is Joe Baranowski. County commission staff report. As staff worked to quote implement the city's auto dealer strategy, city staff identified a potential opportunity to increase the amount of available land for future auto dealer users. Auto dealer strategy from twenty years ago, no problem. Their land for auto dealers became an opportunity of a lifetime, and the planning commission decided that a master plan, which a high school student could write in a week, was too much of a burden for a developer who needs certainty. During the meeting, June fifteenth, no more opportunity of a lifetime. And when residents made specific proposals to allow infinite flexibility on the site layout, but in a way that would keep a legally binding portion of the twenty nine acres observed for non-auto dealer uses, the staff admitted why they would all be rejected. Quote, we promoted the property as the entire thing being available for auto dealerships. June twenty first, Mr. Borjoli and Ms. Lebers decide there is no possible traffic impact because they drive by Ford and Honda once in a while. Staff plays along with the well on a square foot basis nonsense. Could be offices, could be restaurants, could be other things like that, the mayor says. It would be, quote, more concerned about the limitations we might put on a potential client. Could even be an auto dealership. Clamor close mystery buyer. They are talking about the future of mobility. That's the entirety of what is known about the long-term fiscal impact. When it becomes clear that Ms. Levers will support a motion to reject the staff recommendation, Mr. Larkin comes to the rescue. Might be a way to alleviate concerns about twenty nine acres of just auto dealers, end quote. The legal jargon of design guidelines never had any possibility of doing that. Could be's, might be's, drive by's. One assured beneficiary, clamor crow. How do I continue to ignore that much of what is happening in the city was not included in the general plan? We're not making public safety a priority. We are jeopardizing the safety of thousands of restaurants and thousands of residents and future residents, allowing irresponsive development right in the epicenter of a known emergency response time to problem caused by traffic congestion. It's more concerning about screening children from harmful behavior. We need to request a way to screen the total disregard for transparency, fairness, and public interest that is routinely on display in this room. This was not about democracy being a little messy. Allowing developers to bypass standard processes and making decisions with no credible basis will protect the health, safety, and welfare of residents is not something that would be harmful to all residents.
Joe, anyone else?
I have no more speakers.
All right, then we will, and nobody online? As well?
Correct.
All right, we will close the public comment, bring back for council discussion as a reminder. This is a discussion, uh, and it's open to all of us to have a conversation. No one gets to take five or ten minutes of this time, but we open it for discussion. Are there any comments from any of the council members? Council member spring.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. Uh, I'm, I'm not going to repeat what I said in June. Uh, but I want to remind everyone, when we worked on the general plan, the dealerships never were supposed to be in that area. They were always sort of supposed to be in the convoy on conduct where we started already. Uh, that wa, that was not a mistake made during the general plan definition. That was by design that we wanted to have that that parcel there at the end for medical offices and daylight because we knew with our aging uh population, there would be a need down the road for that. Uh, I'm disappointed that the council majority disagreed and thinks a car dealership is more uh important than than these kinds of offices and and without any restrictions imposed on it. So uh, it's, it is clear, I mean, you know, you can put lipstick on a pig, but at the end of the day, uh, uh, that's what they want. There is car dealerships. And then if you want, but then say it, right, but but but
Well, I think, I think one council member did say that. I do also think, council member, that um to say that we, the majority preferring a car dealership over medical, I think is inaccurate. I think that's, that's uh something you're just coming up with. We do have other properties where there is uh opportunity for medical. We're pursuing that. We, just because we have the land there doesn't mean we can force medical to come in. We have property where we are pursuing and trying to get hospital services and other medical services here. It doesn't just have to be on that land at Cochrane and one oh one. In fact, medical, we, it's proven, medical, medical facilities do generate additional and more uh, more traffic than you might see in uh, with car dealerships. The comments from somebody in the, in the public last time talked about more uh auto, more, more cars are being purchased online. People aren't going to a dealership. So that in fact, really, I think confirms the fact that there would be less traffic generated in that area as opposed to what we might find with office buildings and medical. So it's not fair to say that that there's a majority here that sees that car dealerships are a greater priority or more important than than medical. I think that's a false statement. I think we need to be careful about uh, making those kinds of statements about council members.
Mayor sincerely interrupted me uh when I wasn't done yet.
Uh, I think it's a discussion.
I I cannot make that up. Where's the odds to? That's part of the general plan. So so
The general plan didn't say that certain council members have a greater concern about leaderships than medical offices. That's what you said.
Okay, I, I'm not going to. Thank you.
Very good. Anyone else? Council member uh Martinez Beltran.
Thank you. Um, I'll say before I get to my, one with the DePaul before I forget with medical. We have an existing medical center that we know that the county has approved to invest in and retrofit. And I think that's why people see the significance of building upon that. We already have billions of dollars and a billion coming in in infrastructure. I think it makes good sense to do something there. Whereas you have a development that hasn't yet happened, it's on the books. We've seen other developments that don't ever get realized. Things happen. Um, I'm going to go with the sure bet and, you know, and kind of hedge my risks that way. Another thing, I think as far as the big miss for me here is we spent a lot of time on our economic development um and blueprint. And we've, you know, I've, I have and many other leaders here talk a lot about Morgan Hill and what it means to live here. And we really have a very different opportunity, I've said this before, to do things differently here. Um, see us missing that opportunity more and more, and we're getting farther and farther away. Uh, for us to say that we have a strategy to build recreation and tourism and wine tasting and culinary here in Morgan Hill and then put at the gateway of our city twenty nine acres, even any auto dealerships that were never supposed to be there because we've zoned for them to be farther down. Now we have other dealerships already. I think that's a big mistake. I think uh the entrance to Morgan Hill should say something. It should be inviting. It should feel warm. It should um you know, those should be our vantage point where we tell people, we're wine country. We are where you want to come and relax. You want to hike, ride your bike. Those are the things that I heard in our economic development blueprint. And that's not what I'm seeing when we do something like a proving where we have, there's the option. Whether or not it will happen, we don't know. Option for twenty nine acres of auto dealerships. Now, I would say that we should, I will make the motion. That was a great suggestion. Was furiously writing down everything he said. One is to deny the ordinance. I would prefer to do that, but as you, you know, I I can also count to five. Um, I also think that we can allow some flexibility. That's one of the suggestions was allow flexibility. One parcel, we already can have auto dealerships. Let's provide the flexibility for them to do that somewhere on the two parcels, but stay within that same amount of dealerships. I think that's a great suggestion, whoever came up with that. Um, so I would move that we do that, that, you know, there's also another suggestion. I'm flexible here. This is the Hail Mary, right? Uh, no more than X percent. I didn't get your whole thing, but no more of X percent of the total um lot can be zoned as auto office. We cannot design our way out of it. We do not have the teeth with that. We need to put something so that developers have to abide by what we've, what we've laid out. So let's make a percentage. A certain percentage of this lot can be auto dealerships. I think it's also unfair to say that some council members are not, you know, looking at the economics and and the money that's coming in. We are. What do, what do we give up for that? My recommendation, that's my motion, is that we, we consider um
Well, if you're making a motion, you
Question about the motion.
That I do too. When you say you, you need to come up with a number, not just X amount. So if you're going to make a motion, you need to determine the amount.
I think that, you know, this here, the flexibility to do the existing dealerships on both lots. I mean, that, it sounds pretty flexible to me.
What I'm saying, I wanted to make it sure it's clear. You're saying that if there, if there were uh available space for three dealerships on the existing.
Right.
You say only three could be on all of that.
On both, yes.
Total of six or just three on, total on both?
And if I can help, I think what would have to happen if that's going to go forward is because you, there's no ordinance before us. There's no, there's no notice. So it would have to be a direction to staff, come back with an ordinance that does something along the lines of what the council members suggesting.
Right.
Um, to the extent that that would be legal.
Okay, yeah, that's what I'm saying. Are we, that's why I'm trying to get clear in my mind. Are you?
Okay.
What are you, what are the limitations you're trying to put on there? And and how clear is it? And then again, what are, what are the legal ramifications of it as well?
Yeah, I mean, what I'm trying to do is I'm trying to prevent the twenty nine acres or even the majority of the site or half the site to be all auto dealerships. That's a lot of land. And I think when we're thinking about it, we want to be flexible. We heard that there's, you know, a client who wants to come in. They want to build. You only allow two dealerships. You don't know if they can fit them there. Maybe they can fit them here. Okay, fine. Because that, we just give everything away, I guess is what I'm saying. And it sounds like we can't control that with design. So let's go back. Let's have staff look at it and, you know, let's come up with some flexibility.
I've got a question for you too. When, when a dealership comes in, and sometimes whether it's a dealership or it may be some other larger operation, oftentimes they're looking for incentives. And I think we, we see that more, if I'm not mistaken, more often with dealerships. And so with that, doesn't that give us a little more power in, in how we see them laying out, you know, that sort of?
Yeah, I'll take, I'll take the, the opportunity to answer the, the question. I don't know if it was Mr. Baranowski or Mr. Jimenez that asked it um about whether or not design guidelines would prevent twenty nine acres.
I'm not, it's, that's not the question.
But but yeah, the answer to the question is, is, is not in and of itself. Um, not alone, but it gives, um, but yes, there are other tools that we would use in conjunction. A hundred percent of of auto dealers and new auto dealers require um some form of um, some sort of tax sharing.
Yep.
Um, fee, fee financing and other agreements that give council, the city council, not planning commission, the council, a hundred percent control over how that property is developed.
Okay, so we then do still have, we would then still have as a council, control over saying, hey, we're, we're, you know, yeah, we don't want twenty nine acres. If at some point we said we could live with seventy five to eighty four, whatever that might be, that's where we could have that kind of say.
And within the design guidelines, if a developer came forward with a twenty nine acre lot, a parking lot of full cars, absolutely a hundred percent, um, the planning commission probably wouldn't permit it. But if they didn't, I know the council would call it up and deny that.
Right, exactly. Yeah, we, yeah, yep, okay. Please, council member Lebers.
I do have a question. When you're talking about flexibility and all that, are you talking about both parcels or just one? You know, the red zone and the pink zone or whatever color.
I don't know if you can put that picture at first.
So are you talking about both areas, the whole twenty nine acres? Okay, that's all. You don't have to put them out.
I don't have to put the map up.
I just wanted to know if you were talking about one of the sections or?
I'm saying, right now, it's only allowed on one.
Right.
But if you were to allow it on that same amount on both, they could decide
Put it as an aggregate.
Where they're going to put it. Rather than us just giving them a blank slate and they come back and tell us what rules are going to work for them. I think that we, as the city, should say to them, this is what we would like. These are our rules. And, you know, we're willing to work with you where you need some flex.
Which we can do when they come in asking for incentives.
Yeah, and those agreements would come to the city council for consideration.
Okay, okay. So I'm not, that's where we're at, uh, as far as that. Council member Borjoli.
So again, I want to stress, I don't know where this um uh, came with the whole dealerships on all twenty nine. Uh, that's not what I heard in the June meeting at all. Uh, but I did hear it from members of the audience and some council members uh about, you know, dealerships being on the whole uh, um, twenty nine acres. So uh, again, you made a great statement. I don't think the council would allow that anyway. But uh, if you look at the, the, from what I heard in June, um, that one acre, uh, now that one parcel. um, a dealership would need to go slightly into the next parcel, the peak area. So that's why, uh, because of the, the length, uh, of the dealership, including the service bay and sales and the dealership floor. So that's why I think it extended into that parcel. But, and so my, my thinking was we're gonna have one dealership and we have to extend it into there. But that land is also zoned for office. You could still put offices on that land. There's nothing to prevent putting offices on the, on that land in addition to a car dealership. Now, as far as traffic, I made the comment in June, go look at the convent dealerships. Go look at the, no traffic from the dealerships, no issues of off-street parking. Okay, now, if you put up an office building which is say a hundred offices, you're gonna have a couple hundred cars uh, going in and out. So that's traffic. Okay, so if people are complaining about traffic, then, uh, a dealership to me would be better. And a dealership would bring in more revenue than an office complex. So that was my thinking.
Yep.
In this whole scheme of things. And again, I, I don't know where putting dealerships on, on the whole property came in. But I, I think it's really, uh, it's not a good thing to put that out there when it's not true. So, uh, that's my two cents.
Mayor, I, I definitely heard a whole different conversation than my colleague here. Um, I did not understand Jennifer, Matt, Edith, I did not understand there's one dealership that is gonna just smudge into the next parcel. And that's why we're having a rezoning. In fact, my understanding is that all of that land is now rezoned and they are able to put auto dealerships. Can somebody please explain this to me?
The, the property, but if, if the second reading is, if that ordinance is adopted in 30 days, the property at any point, part, in any part of those two zoning designations, because they're the parcel, we're talking, they're figuring those parcels. It's not an accurate reference, but, um, but at any part in those, that those two zones that will allow auto dealers, auto dealers can go in there. It does not mean that auto dealers will take up and prove that it's physically impossible for them to take up all 29 acres. But 27 acres that they could physically take over, it doesn't mean that we're required to allow them to take over 27 acres with all, all 27 acres with auto dealers. It, it means that there's some flexibility as to where the auto dealers go within those sites and they can go anywhere on those two zoning desert areas. But it wouldn't, it doesn't mean that they can take over all 27 developable acres. No, it doesn't. They couldn't without the council saying, yes, that's what we want you to do.
We could. If we do the zoning, then within the zoning, that would be op, they could, would have the option to then say, as we see it happen very often. We've spent millions of dollars on our design and we've talked with all of our consultants. And now we have this plan. And for us to go back would be quite a hardship. So instead, what I'm saying to help the businesses, I don't think any business wants to come in in, in a kind of environment that some of these other businesses have had to experience. I don't think they would be wanting to do that. So what I'm saying is why don't we lay that out now? It's very clear that we don't want all of this land to be taken by auto dealerships. Why don't we, why don't we codify that?
There's, there is no legal way to do it. It doesn't remove the flexibility that we're trying to build in. I, I very much appreciate Mr. Jimenez's suggestions. Um, and if we were going to assume that Remo Crowe was going to own all 29 acres, um, for, in perpetuity. Now, those, those, those could be workable. The problem is that, that we don't have discretion over allowing the property owners to subdivide those properties and raise in which those suggestions will no longer make sense because we could end up with auto dealer blight, auto dealer blight, auto dealer blight, auto dealer blight. Um, and, um, and that's the last thing we want. I think we hear loud and clear what the council is intends, which is not to have these big, not to have just a, you know, two new Ford stores to take up 29 acres, um, which is, in, which is not what anybody from staff wants either. The guidelines, along with the site and design review, along with the, um, need for council to approve it, whatever financing is needed in order to get an auto dealer to move here, um, all gives us the ability to say, no, we don't want those things that we've all heard loud and clear, we don't want. Staff's not gonna, and staff's not gonna let a developer spend millions of dollars on a design that council has said loud and clear, we're going to deny. Um, you know, we, we do, we do see applications when they come in and we do meet with developers and we let them know what we've heard loud and clear is not acceptable.
Don, I think that we should say that. I think we should put those rules and codify that as a council and protect Morgan Hill. Um, and we can build in flexibility after. I'm gonna stick with, you know, I think to make that motion. I don't want to.
Hold on one second. Don, real quick, I'm sorry. Councilmember Spring has some comments he'd like to make. So, let's, let's let councilmember Spring speak.
Yeah, the city attorney just confirms my concerns, right? And we did talk about that last time. Because it was me who brought up the question about flexibility, uh, and, and, and I learned the last meeting already, that's not an option. I, I don't know where my council member has this information from, but that could, that could be free. Uh, plus car dealerships on there. None of us knows that they could. And the only, the only way to prevent that right now is to say no to the, once we have changed the sounding, we can't stop that anymore. Then, then car dealership one will come and we'll, the council will approve it probably. Yeah, later car dealership two comes. Another council will approve that one too. Two years later, another council will approve the third one, right? The, the only way to prevent it to happen down the road is to say no tonight. It's the only way. Everything, e- everything else that we're guessing hypothetically thinking what might or might not happen. But, uh, no one said it's only one car, a car dealership. I don't know.
And, and no one said it wasn't.
You, you said there was only one.
And Mr. Larkin just says it's gonna come back to the council and, and, and he feels based on what he heard. Okay, we're not going to approve three car, uh, car dealerships up there. No one wants three.
I, I think, I think what, yeah, I, I think what we do get is, I mean, just quite frankly, there could be five or seven. Uh, you know, it, it's now a matter of how much space do each of these take? So I don't even think we should be thinking numbers of dealerships. We should be thinking how much space is consumed. And that's what we have the ability to control, uh, at the end. So, we're gonna, we're done with discussion. Uh, if there's not a motion, I'll make a motion.
I didn't make a motion.
If you could restate it, because I'm not, it wasn't clear on it.
Sure. I would like to move that we accept having it come back. Well, I was told that my motion, that it would need to go back to staff to create an ordinance.
If you, let me summarize the motion. I think the motion is to, um, not approve staff recommendation, not adopt the ordinance, instead direct staff to return with a proposal for an ordinance that would, um, limit the amount of land within the two zones that we're, that we're talking about rezoning, um, that can be dedicated towards car dealerships.
That it? I'm happy to go with that.
Like to make a substitute motion because we have, I'll, I'll second. Okay, so we have a motion. Councilmember Martinez Beltran, second. Uh, councilmember Spring, I'd like to make a substitute motion, uh, based on the fact that we do have control and we do have final say on how much land can be consumed. I would like to make a motion to adopt, uh, item number five as written. And if there's no second, it'll be second by councilmember Borjoli. Uh, so we'll take a vote on the second.
Uh, yeah, the, the, the second substitute motion goes first. If that fails, it goes back to the original motion.
All in favor? Aye. All opposed?
No.
That fails. So we vote then on councilmember Martinez Beltran? Uh, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? No. I saw three to two. There you go. Down. Uh, thank you, Joe. Uh, I, next item is item number eight, approving final map for Manzanita Park. Uh, councilmember, you're the one who cleared that?
I, I pulled that and I'd like to, um, I'd like to have a staff report because I have a few, I have a few questions for staff. And I want, uh, people to know, some of these approvals of tracts and all that are coming through the pipeline are not things that all of us had anything to do with. They were a different council at the time. Because it takes many years before it gets to this final map. But I do have questions because now it's part of my life. And so is there a staff person that can talk to this agenda item?
Yes, so item number eight is approving the final map for Manzanita. And let's see, from our team, we have Maria Anhais.
Good evening, Mayor. Councilmember Maria Angeles, Land Development Engineering Senior Engineer, uh, from the Engineering Utilities Department. Um, before you, we have, um, the final map is, uh, councilmember Libris, Libris mentioned, final map for Manzanita Park. It's a tract located east of the intersection of Monterey Road and Tilton Avenue. It's currently a vacant site. Um, the developer, uh, Toll, uh, West Coast, um, LLC is proposing, um, to develop 67 units, uh, condominium units, uh, town home style condominium units on the property. Um, the proposal, uh, the tentative map that was approved is dividing the property into two lots because we're extending Tilton Avenue from the west to go to the east and end at the easterly property line with unincorporated county parcel. Um, with the final map, we have a subdivision improvement agreement, um, improvements agreement that we're also proposing or requesting the council to approve. Uh, there's also an encroachment agreement, um, because the developer is, um, for the final map is, uh, recommend, uh, proposing to, um, dedicate, uh, the Tilton Avenue, uh, future right-of-way to the city. However, because that right-of-way, uh, is too wide for such a small, um, a number of traffic that we're expecting. Uh, because it's, it ends at the eastern boundary and it doesn't go through and connect with Burnett. Um, that right-of-way will be, uh, the right-of-way will be dedicated, but the actual improvements will be a narrower street. And so we have an encroachment agreement that, um, requires the project, it just spouts out the rights and obligations of both party, the city and the developer regarding a sanitary sewer. It's a private sewer that crosses Tilton, the future Tilton extension. Um, and then there are some, uh, private amenities that we're allowing, uh, such as, uh, benches and barbecue pits to be, uh, situated within the future right-of-way. But that's not part of the, the street that will be, uh, constructed in the interim. So that's what's before you. Is there anything else I should expand on?
I know, but I do have some questions. Thank you. It was very thorough. And like I said, this is the first time this has come before me, so I did really look at it very closely. Um, I'm familiar with Tilden, okay? Uh, is there going to be a signal or anything there? Because that's a very busy intersection, especially with people taking back roads. And so, um, I know they can't go any further than into the development. But if you're in that development and you're trying to turn left to go into Morgan Hill. So is anything planned for the safety of traffic at that intersection?
Yes, so, so currently we have an existing traffic signal. So the actual, the project, which is on the east side of Monterey, will complete the four legs of the intersection.
Okay.
So there is a traffic signal improvement.
Okay, good, good. I, I was worried about that. And then the other thing, having looked at this map in this particular, because it's divided, all right, and it's not real big on either side. Are retention ponds necessary, uh, as for something that small? Or, because?
Um, the retention ponds, um, that you noticed in the front of the property.
Okay.
It's actually, um, going to mitigate the requirement, this is a water board, um, regulation to regulate, uh, to actually have new projects that increase, add, uh, add, replace or create impervious surfaces. And because this is vacant land, they have to treat the new runoff that they create. So aside from treatment, there's also retention.
Okay.
Um, of water. So that's what those, the bi-retentions in the front are for. And there's also underground retention facilities inside the property.
And you said they wouldn't be on city sewer. They're going to have their own sewers, right?
Um, they have sewer that they will connect, a private sewer from the, from the northerly portion through the south. Um, it'll go to connect to Monterey. They'll build an extension to connect to existing sewer at Burnett and Monterey Road.
Okay.
So there's no existing sewer in front of the property.
Okay, thank you. And then on Monterey Road, will there be curb and sewer, um, on Monterey Road even for the entrance?
Yes.
Okay, all right. And one final question. Thank you. Um, when it connects to, uh, where it dead ends, you, there's a possibility that that road might at some point go over to, uh, Burnett, right?
Correct.
Any idea like when? Because, you know, there's a nice healthy signal there too, so.
Yes. Unfortunately, I, I, as I mentioned, that east property, easterly property is unincorporated county.
Aye.
Um, so it would take, uh, an annexation, um, for that first annex to the city. And then the city comes in with, right, I mean, project comes in with a proposal to or may, maybe the city does do the extension in the future. But the trigger would be, will, will that site be part of the city in the future?
I understand now. Thank you. I'm sorry to be late to the party.
No problem.
I just, you know, really wanted to dwell into this. So thank you. You answered all my questions.
You're welcome.
Any other questions? Councilmember Borjoli.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, so you're gonna have traffic lights on Monterey, uh, at the, uh, at that Monterey and Tilton location. So right, less than, less than a block, uh, on Burnett, there's another light. So those lights are gonna be very, very close to one another. And traffic going north in, um, commute time, um, that, that may play a big part of, uh, backup.
Um, as I mentioned, uh, councilmember, the signal is, we have existing traffic signal at the intersection. So the project is just completing the, the, the four legs of the intersection. And so, um, Burnett, as you mentioned, has a signal as well. Um, there is a part, part of the traffic modification is to, uh, figure out the phasing um, for that, for the signal, how, how it operates. So I would think part of that would also relate to any modification that needs to happen at Burnett. So if there is, if there's a need to do any modifications.
Okay, well, thank you. I'm familiar with that neighborhood and that, those traffic signals. And, uh, I could just see, uh, a disaster in the making. So I hope it, it's timed, you know, properly. Thank you.
Thank you.
Councilmember Spring.
Thank, thank you, Mayor. The, the project itself got approved, whether one likes it or not. And yes, it will add to the nightmare along Monterey, coming into downtown, but that, that we discussed it in the past, not going there today. Um, but, but my question for the city attorney is, does, why, why does it income to city council if we only can say yes?
Because the subdivision map act says that it has to go to city council for, for confirmation that the project meets the, um, it's really, it's more of a transparency thing. It's confirmation the project meets all of the requirements that were put in on the tentative map and with the final map, it accurately reflects what was, um, proposed in the tentative map. Um, and assuming all of those things are true, that it, that it matches, when council doesn't have discretion to say no. Um, the council does have discretion as council member relievers did to inquire, to ensure that, um, all of those requirements that are in the tentative map got, were carried over to the final map in the subdivision agreement.
Okay, thank you. I appreciate the clarification because sometimes people don't understand, you don't like a project, but you vote yes, uh, it's because I have to. So I, there's no other option tonight, so.
Yep. There are times when all of us have to vote yes. Yeah. Any other questions? And being done, we'll open it to public comment. Any public comment?
Yes, we have Steve Savage.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor. Councilmember Steve Savage with Toll Brothers. Um, we are happy that we were able to acquire this project recently from a local developer and look, and look forward to actually building out the project as designed. Uh, staff's been great to work with in order to meet all the requirements that would be necessary to bring it before you tonight for approval. And, uh, we're looking forward to proceeding and going forward. And if you have any questions, I'd love to answer them.
Thank you, Steve. Any other public comment? Any other public comment?
We have no more speakers.
All right, we're going to bring that back and we're closed public comment, bring it back for council discussion. Any comments or are being done? Can we get a motion to approve item eight? Motion to approve. Councilmember Borjella, second, Councilmember Libris, all in favor? Aye, and opposed? None. That passes five zero. Okay, moving on to public hearings, introducing ordinance establishing the chapter eighteen point two nine Monterey corridor form based code.
Do we have some, Mayor, can I recommend?
We're going to take a short break, forgive me. Yep.
Thank you.
Five minutes. Yeah, okay, five minute break.
I'm back.
We are going to reconvene. We're on item number thirteen. And who is doing the presentation for us? I'm on down.
Good evening, Adam Paskowski, Principal Planner with the Long Range Plan Division. So the item before you tonight is an ordinance that would establish chapter eighteen point two nine of title eighteen, which is our zoning code, to establish the Monterey corridor form base code to create a vibrant and mixed use corridor that encourages walking and biking as envisioned in the twenty thirty five general plan. The form base code serves as a stepping stone for a future downtown specific plan. In addition, the staff secured a grant for the preparation of a form based code, which requires us to complete and to come to a decision point on the form base code by September. So that's why we are here for you, before you tonight, so we can get reimbursed through the grant program. So we had an outreach, the planning commission held public workshops back in twenty twenty and twenty twenty one. However, the project was put on hold due to issues with the grant and we had to enter into a new agreement for the grant. And then once, before that we were able to enter a new agreement, our priority shifted and we were working on the housing element. So this project got put on hold. And so we reactivate this project in the past few months and we held a hybrid community meeting regarding the form base code on July nineteenth, twenty twenty three to update residents, property owners and developers of the most recent draft form base code. And in addition, we presented at the Chamber of Commerce Economic Development Community Meeting on August tenth, twenty twenty three. And then a few weeks ago, or about a month ago, on July twenty fifth, the planning commission held a public hearing and recommended approval of the form base code. So now I'm going to turn it over to Roger Eastman, who is our consultant with Lisa Wise Consulting. And he will prepare or go over through select slides from the consultant presentation that's included in your staff packet.
Mayor, council, staff, good evening. Roger Eastman, Director with Lisa Wise Consulting. Pleased to be with you, sir, and counsel, and to present the form base code to you. A lot of the comments that I was going to make have been covered by Adam and his presentation. We started this a long time ago and it's really great now to be able to stand before you after the planning commission recommendation to hopefully see an, an action of approval from you tonight. What we're doing is implementing your general plan vision to create vibrant mixed use corridors encouraging walking and biking. And so what we're really doing with the form base code is implementing the mixed use flex zone, which allows for seven to twenty-four units per acre. And I'm going to digress for a moment. I've been in towns, my third trip to Morgan Hill, had a couple of hours today to enjoy downtown. That is essentially the product of a form base code, even though I, I know it isn't. And that's what you're ultimately trying to create in the rest of the Monterey corridor. And you, you really have a gem of a community here that through this code and through a future downtown specific plan, you can really create the kind of film and character and place that you're looking for. So through the form base code, buildings will front onto the street as called for in the general plan vision and density will decrease with distance from downtown. As you know, the priority development area was approved by A BAG in February of twenty twenty. And so this really allows for the city to update the downtown specific plan. As you know, funding's not yet allocated for that plan, but this code, as Adam indicated, serves as the basis for any future specific plan update. So what does this matter? And it really does matter because zoning, the rules and regulations in your zoning code allows for the kind of development that the developer actually builds. And if the developer builds something we don't like, we need to go back and look at our codes to see if they're actually doing the right thing. And it's just the codes that are incorrect. So the image on the left here shows your typical conventional zoning code that we see all over the United States. The clearing and zoning that's based on separation of use. And it's really automobile dependent and automobile oriented. What a form base code tries to do is shift the priority from use to form that relationship of buildings to buildings and buildings to the street or public space. And that's why you land up with a different type of character that you see represented in the illustration on the right hand side. So the concept is different places need different regulations. So the primary goal of a form base code is shaping public space. And you do that, as I mentioned before, by really thinking about how buildings are placed relative to the, to the street. For example, instead of having a typical setback, you have a build to line. So you bring the buildings closer to the street as you see in that lower image. And that allows you to create this more walkable, more character driven place. The form base code is actually also based on, if you like, the DNA of the community. A form base code for Morgan Hill might have similar elements to one in Santa Luis Obispo, but the details will be different because they're place based. So why do communities choose form base codes? Well, here are a number of different reasons for it. The bold indicates why in Morgan Hill, a form base code really makes sense. You're revitalizing the downtown, preserving the sense of place of the downtown, making that walkable place. And it's scaled, the right size scale of development for your downtown corridor area. You can also retrofit info on vacant or underutilized sites, very important within the whole character of, of Morgan Hill. And then protect neighborhoods. I mean, we see this all over the country where there's huge development impacts from development. But, you know, through the right code, you can protect neighborhood and city character. The regulating plan or zoning map that implements the zoning code will be, the form base code will be added onto your zoning map. And you can see the corridor driven nature of the form base code. You can see specifically where it excludes the downtown, that gap in the middle there. And then you'll see the three different zones that are described in two slides from now. The structure of the Morgan Hill form base code really ties into your existing zoning ordinance. With the addition of a general introduction, just to explain what a form base code, because it's new to you and the community, to talk about the purpose and how it will apply within that regulating plan area, to introduce the different zoning districts, the different building types that we envision for Morgan Hill, adding frontage type, that is to say, what does the front of the building look like relative to a public space? Adding civic space standards for alleys and, and plazas. Then you always have to have a land use component. What are the right land uses that are appropriate within the different zones that we've created? We tied back to, through the supplemental standards to your existing zoning code for parking, for landscaping and so on. There are some additional landscaping standards, there are some additional sign standards specific to a walkable place rather than elsewhere in the community. Under three zones of a neighborhood zoning district, which really intends to preserve neighborhood character, provide housing accessible to a range of income levels, certainly walkable, close to neighborhood serving commercial uses. The corridor zoning district is really the majority of, of the form base code regulating plan area. We have mixed use, walkable character, emulating what you have in downtown. And then the urban general zoning district applies mostly to the south, business oriented with a variety of supporting uses, slightly taller, bigger buildings, and the opportunity for faster job opportunity centers. The planning commission spent some time with me talking through the code and getting their hands into the code. And they came up with basically three revisions to the code. The chair was concerned with the use of the term typical and typically, which we've now removed from the draft that is before you this evening. We added the projecting and engaged porches to the form based corridor zoning district. And we added some more specificity for ground floor building heights in the urban general zoning district. There was a concern to make sure that commercial spaces had the right ceiling height built into the code. So concluding now, the form base code implements the Morgan Hill general plan, creating that more vibrant mixed use development along the corridor. It implements the mixed use flex land use designation. And it serves as the basis for your future downtown specific plan. Because it's a form base code, it provides predictability that a conventional code doesn't typically have. Important, based on California legislation, the standards are objective. There is no subjective discretionary standard in the code. Form base code is consistent with recent California housing legislation. And the draft that you have before you this evening does include all of the standards and revisions as proposed by the planning commission. Mayor, council, happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Councilmember Spring.
Yeah, thank, thank you for the presentation. We, we, we got the agenda on Friday evening. I, I did not have time to study all the codes since then. So, so bear with me, but I, I'm, I'm kind of of going up to the thirty thousand foot level right now. So, so the whole Monterey corridor is a patchwork right now. And, and the patchwork got even worse over the past couple of years with, with housing that we had to approve up to five stories because it was a very low income. How would that help here? Because then you have a five story next, next to, to a one story, uh, low income housing. How, how does that help here, if at all?
But thank you, Mayor, and Councilmember Spring. I think it helps because it's establishing the I think it helps because it's establishing the toolkit for future use within the community. When the city does go ahead and develop this specific plan for your downtown and for the corridor, these are the tools then that will allow for the right kind of development, the right size developments and the right character development for the city. In the interim, sure, you might have this disparate uses along the corridor, but allow you have at least the toolbox to get you down the road to where you ultimately want to be.
So there's not a lot of vacant lots anymore. And several recently were filled out, especially for low-income housing, where they have, they can pretty much do whatever they want, including no requirements on parking anymore. So again, where would this code have helped us here? To prevent that or to improve these kinds of projects, that there would be a better fit in that neighborhood?
The idea, Councilmember, is that the code sets up more walkable standards that are more character-driven for Morgan Hill. And you're right, there are not a lot of vacant parcels along the corridor, but there are potentially sites that are available for redevelopment. I don't know your community as well as you do. I haven't been here that long, but I've certainly, as I drove the corridor this evening before coming here, I think that's a really old building, and it's a single-story building. It's located in a place where it could become a two- or three-story building. And these tools now allow that property owner with the right incentives perhaps, or the right desire, to redevelop based on these new standards.
Right, but they already can do that now. Most of it is sound mix, what is it, mix, flex, flex, mix, whatever it's called. The idea always was we would have businesses at the bottom in the corners, right? And housing on top, but that never happens. We only end up with housing. So I struggle to understand how this would change anything we're doing now.
So let's talk about that. And so this is it's the same issue with any zoning code. Whenever we do a zone update, or even if we do a full general plan update, we're always starting.
Where's your microphone?
Yes, so it says it's.
There you go. There you go. Thank you.
So we always, when you always have a zoning code update or a general plan update, you're starting, you're making changes because something happened in the past that you're trying to avoid in the future. So everywhere, every community, when you have that zoning code update, or even something just like this, like the form-based code, or even a specific plan, it's setting what your goals are and what you want to see in the future, when that time comes, when that property or any properties redeveloped. So it's trying to achieve that overall outcome. It's a long-range plan. It's something that's going to take time to do. We won't see immediate results throughout the entire corridor until those properties do redevelop, or if they do substantial improvements where they need to do, if they want to expand their business, or go over certain square footage on what they have now, or a certain percentage where this code would apply to them then. But.
But help me here. I'm really trying to understand how, what difference it would make, right? Even now, when there's a lot and they want to do something else, they can do it now. And sometimes if it's for low-income housing, they can do pretty much whatever they want, up to six stories high, right? And so how would this code help us make that nicer if state law says you can't? It's low income. You have to do whatever, whatever they want.
Right. So this, we, this does show or provide objective standards. And affordable housing-type projects could go, like you said, request concessions or waivers on this code. But if there's a mixed use, or if it's any other type of use besides residential, would have to comply with this. And it's to really bring that building closer to the front edge of the street and really create that pedestrian-friendly environment. But I understand your point on residential-type projects, especially the affordable housing, where they could get those waivers.
Yeah, so you know Morgan Hill, right? It doesn't change that quickly in certain areas, right? Our patchwork will remain for the next generation at least, right? So I see, I understand the concept, but the concept works when you start from scratch, when there's nothing. But when you already have existing neighborhoods and a patchwork of every kind of building, and it doesn't look necessarily nice overall, how is that going to help us fix that? It's not unless unless a hundred years from now, and everyone else has sold their properties and done something else. What am I missing here?
It's, I guess the only thing.
I don't want to give you a hard time. I'm trying to understand what is, what will be so different compared to what we have now.
It's just that the longer any community waits to implement a new code or any update, it's just the more properties are going to get developed, and the less chances you have of making a change today versus tomorrow.
So your statement about incremental change is absolutely true. But it's, by having a code that focuses on the interaction between a building and the public realm, focuses on that change and starts it now. And it's true, if an affordable project comes in, if even a market rate project comes in, they do have some ability to bypass or waive some of our requirements, but our intent is clear, and our guidance is there with the form-based code, and it's something that we haven't had before. And the developers that want to blend in, and we do have a lot of them who are willing to do that, will have that guidance from the first step, and they know what we expect. They may still ask for a waiver of something or a concession, but they do have some guidance. And I think that's one of the best things we can give them, is a firm picture of the intent of what we want to see. And then we negotiate things out and work with them as the law requires.
With current zoning, can you figure out the way of design standards too and stuff like that?
This is more intentional than design standards. I mean, it does, anything in this code would rise to the level of an objective standard. But it does give more of a picture and a vision on what we're looking to see versus being based on use and then adding design after.
So that's my understanding, so in the long term, right? Hopefully this would be a baseline, as a tool, to kind of uniformly build out down the road whenever we can, if no one would ask for an exception.
Correct.
Do you have an example of a recent project where if this would have been in place, it might look different than how it looks now?
That is a great question. I think we have examples of projects that have voluntarily done that public realm interface that we want to see, but the code would then put forward. I would look at Sunstreet as a great example of focusing on the plaza along Third, looking at how it relates to the street, and there was a lot of work done at the planning commission level on that design. This builds those items into the code from the get-go. So there's no negotiating. They already, a developer already knows, oh, we're going to want to do this. We're going to want to do that. Or at least the city wants us to do this and wants to do that. So that would be something that, as we do get more projects, and hopefully those changes come with it, instead of us having to demand it. It starts from there.
I'm thinking, the housing that is fairly new in the area of Old Monterey, along Monterey Road, they pretty much did all that. They built as close to the street as they could and have picket fences. I don't know what else, but it seems to pretty much align, be aligned with that code.
And that's, those are the developers that we want to see, who do build in the Morgan Hill style. But not all developers walk in the door being willing to do.
The worst offenders are the projects we had to approve, even though, as you know, we had a lot of concerns. So that would not prevent that, correct?
It would, they would know what we expect, but there are tools that they can use to get around our requirements. And so we would still have those debates with them on it. I mean, I know, you know, if the project that you're referencing is the one I'm thinking of, there was a lot of conversation internally and a lot of push from staff on the design. And having the guidance with this might enable them to build a better frontage to it, really interface a little bit better. Hundred percent affordable projects are going to get that additional height and additional density. And we can't do much about that, but we can work with them to relate to the street more and provide more pedestrian amenities and.
It would not, would it be fair to say would not give us more rights to to say, hey, you're not fitting into the neighborhood with what you're proposing, right? So when you have a six, five, six-story house, and then a one-story neighborhood right next to it, an older one, no matter what zoning code we have, it still doesn't look nice, right?
It's definitely going to be a challenge.
Quick, I think you had a comment to make on that, something you understand.
Thank you, Mayor. If I could just add to the conversation, Councilmember Spring, I completely understand your concern, especially given that it's so new, but I think just building on a comment that staff made, you lack standards now for what we call frontage-type standards. And I think that's really one of the strengths of the code, even more so than the building types, although the building types are important. So what does that front of the building look like? And there's some really good historic frontage elements in Morgan Hill. This code now establishes the right standard for a porch, or the right standard for a stoop, or a courtyard, or any of the other frontages. And that will make a big difference down the line. So even though there may be some concessions in building height, or the intensity of the project, or the setbacks, if you get the frontages right, the way that building relates to the street, you've made a huge difference for the ultimate character of the community.
Yeah, you get me right. I don't have concerns. I've been a planning commissioner in the past, and was part of discussion of many projects along Monterey. And most of them did exactly what we're discussing here, especially the newer projects, right? So I'm just trying to, most of asking questions that everyone understand what we're talking about, but I'm trying to see how this can be a tool to help us. I appreciate the answers. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember. I've got a couple of questions real quick as well. You had mentioned waivers and concessions. Do we have the ability to to vote on those? It sounds like some we do, maybe some we don't.
You have the ability to vote on them because the council retained the ability to vote on them? You don't have any discretion to deny them?
Okay, so it's just like we had talked about earlier. It's something we have to say yes to.
Yes, unless, unless we can prove by evidence, the evidence that the concession or waiver is not needed to improve affordability of the project.
Got it. Okay, but it really doesn't impact what Councilmember Spring is talking about here. It sounds to me like what you're saying is this really, more than anything, provides some form of insurance as we get into potential projects along this corridor. You know, this will, this will no doubt play in with the strategic plan. Is that correct?
Yes, that's correct.
So the strategic plan, and then we've got this form-based code that all becomes part of what we're trying to accomplish in this corridor here. Is that correct? Am I hearing you right?
Yes.
Okay. So I get it. I understand what you're saying. It's as we go down the line here, as a parcel becomes available, now at least we try to apply these standards where we can. And I think, and I think like Councilmember Spring is saying, they may be doing it anyway, which is great. But this may just be sort of insurance policy to try to convince them to do it the way we're asking. Is that a fair assessment?
Yes.
Okay. Okay. Good. Well, thank you. Anyone else, Councilmember, Newbers?
Thank you. Thank you for your report and the consultant's report. This has been on the books for quite a while, actually. The idea of it, back in my day, we were talking about this too. And in fact, we've even started now to put the division in the four lanes as we are heading south further and further. And to kind of make two sides of the road, and that's great. I see this as kind of guidelines, that if we pass this today, I want to know how much staff time going forward? Because I take it there's no one right now knocking on our door that wants to build something. How much staff time is this going to increase once we pass this resolution?
I don't think it's going to increase that much staff time. It's a code, so it'd just be any, just like any other portion of our code that we would implement within the city.
Okay, so are you saying you basically kind of do this anyway? Because I was kind of hearing that from Councilmember Spring and also our mayor, that you do kind of make guidelines anyway. So is it really necessary to pass this resolution?
Well, this is a zoning code.
Zoning code, okay.
And so this would have different standards compared to other portions of our city. There's different standards for setbacks. Where a building has to be located on the property, currently within our zoning code, it does not specify that at all, so they can develop anywhere on a property. This one brings it closer to the street. There's code sections that require civic public spaces on the property, which we currently don't have in our zoning code. And it specifies the types of buildings, as well as, as Roger mentioned, what the front of the building looks like, as well as pedestrian-type signage for commercial uses.
I saw those. Thank you. So I understand that now. So it really, right today, it doesn't increase staff time because there's nothing before you. And when it does, something does come before you, it's just going to be kind of a checklist that they have to go through, and they already go through a list.
Correct. That answers my question. And it's different from having guidelines because it is objective.
Right.
And so it serves with the rest of our zoning ordinance as objective standards that an applicant would need to meet, rather than a negotiated or judgment call on whether or not they meet the design that we'd like to see.
I understand. Thank you. And then if someone could bring up the map again onto the screen here. Thank you. I am very familiar with Morgan Hill, so I was able to figure this out. Okay. And I think it's really important for the public, and even some of my colleagues maybe, to have foot street names on here. So we know what we're talking about. I mean, I've identified where Dunn is, okay? And there's a highway loop there. So going south with some street named Roma or something like that. What's the south, the southern border of this? What is the name of the street?
Go back.
Roma, I think it is.
Councilmember Libra, if you can see my pointer. Oh, I have it.
Yes.
Roma is, Roman is down here.
Okay, is that past Watsonville? It doesn't look like there's a big artery.
This one here is Tenet.
Oh, okay. All right. So it's just past Tenet.
Right.
But before.
Down is this main road, east-west road here.
I figured that one out. All right. So it's before Watson, Edmondson. But after.
Edmondson and Tenet are the same.
I know. Yeah.
So it's after, after that, but before where Butterfield connects with Watson.
Okay, so it goes pretty far south. Okay. Down by like Cal Fire, is that what you're talking about?
Not that far.
Not that far.
It essentially makes Tenet in as a node at the end. Okay.
Okay. In the future, for all things, I would like names on the streets. We'll make sure that happens. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Borjoli.
Thank you, Mayor. So I think it was Don who said discretion to deny. I think he made that comment. So I'm going to hit Jennifer with this great question. I think it's a great question anyway. So if you have density, low-income type housing, and the builder is entitled to various things, and the builder wants to build that property the way he wants to build it, can we go back and say we've established a form-based zoning code, and we would like you to be a good neighbor and build your property according to the form-based code? And so we can obviously have that discussion about how far can we go with it with him or her?
So existing projects that are already in process are vested under our current codes. Anyone who's filed a preliminary application under SB three thirty is also vested under the current code. So should this be adopted, it would be anyone who walks in the door thirty days from second read.
Got it.
Okay, and, um, um, I, I'm sorry, I forgot your name.
Roger, Roger Eastman.
Roger Eastman?
Yeah.
I'm sorry. Um, so you mentioned revitalize downtown. How would this revitalize downtown?
Thank, thank you, uh, Councilmember. Um, as we've just been talking, it provides new rules, new clear standards that are objective and very prescriptive about what needs to be built on the building. And that is a really important tool for any developer because there's this certainty that allows him or her in their development proposal to come to staff and say, I've read your code, this is what the code says. And it does allow for hopefully a faster, easier approval process. Many form-based codes actually take that whole approval process to another level, which we've not done with this code, and allow for more expedited approvals under the form-based code. Uh, doesn't always work, but there are a number of communities who have done that where they really are hungry for economic investment.
Okay, I, I, I just don't see any build, new building going on downtown. I think we are at a point in our downtown that, um, it's, it's, for the lack of a better word, maxed out to where it is today. So anyway, that, I, I just wanted to share that with you. And what do you mean by predictability? You mentioned the word predictability.
Yeah, again, thank, thank you for the question. Um, form-based codes tend to be very prescriptive. General con- conventional codes are more prescriptive. By that, I mean, a floor area ratio standard is very vague. FAR of one doesn't really tell you how big, how bulky the building is going to be. It's this numerical value. Whereas in a form-based code, you'll have a build to or step back line. You'll have a building height, you have a required step back, you've got all these plug-on frontages. You certainly got your side setbacks, your parking is behind, not in front promotes the walkability. If you build to the code, there's a certain sense of certainty as to what will result.
Got it. Okay, and you also mentioned a more walkable standard code, and I totally agree with that. Uh, I did write this in one of my questions to, uh, Christina. Um, I, 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 I would have, uh, liked a, a lot more wording in this that, that's referencing, um, Vision Zero. Because this applies to a lot of what Vision Zero is all about. But I, I would have liked some wording in there relative to Vision Zero.
Yeah, so, uh, so this, uh, project for the form-based code, I just want to clarify, um, an earlier question you had about how this affect the downtown. It, this, uh, form-based code excludes the downtown.
Right.
Um,
That's what I thought.
Yes, going north and south of downtown, and it influences that development. It will, um, as part of our PDA, which was one of the slides on the PowerPoint, um, we will be updating our downtown specific plan to a larger area, uh, to cover that PDA area. And, uh, and then this form-based code will help influence that development of the specific plant update when we get to that point. And then, uh, for Vision Zero, this really, uh, form-based code plays well into Vision Zero. It's, um, making it more pedestrian friendly, uh, less auto-related. It's, uh, really bringing people on the street, bringing them, um, have that easier access, that walkable access to different businesses, just like in our downtown today where it's a lot easier to walk through to, uh, different stores or different uses versus going to a strip commercial or a commercial center, uh, such, uh, such as a Ross or Safeway Nob Hill area. It's harder to walk around with a parking lot. Um, and how the buildings are more, a little bit more random and not blocked towards that pedestrian realm. So it's, it helps reduce, uh, that auto accidents or any, um, any other things that, and helps about that Vision Zero program.
Okay, thank you. Okay, Councilmember Martinez-Beltran.
Thank you, Mayor. Okay, um, so the way that I'm seeing this is, I've talked a lot about a specific plan and how we have the specific plan in downtown, and I'm just so crazy about it that I want it, I want it to vote. Because, um, that's what's gotten us to where we are in downtown. What I am hearing, and I would like to clarify, is that this is almost a precursor to the specific plan that maybe we can't quite get to. And we are working away with grants and steps to get there.
Correct.
Because it looks like it's set up that way. Okay, great. So that's good news. So do we have a horizon for that? Do we know what that timeline might look like and how long we're living with the form-based code and kind of using that as a crutch till we get to where we really want to be?
Um, with the expansion of our PDA, um, the guideline is to be, have a specific plan completed by twenty twenty-five. And we may or may not meet that based on funding because we are going to be cobbling together grants and internal efforts. Um, but it's definitely feasible, and so we'll be updating everyone as we move forward.
Okay, awesome. And the grant was how much a hundred and something for what we're using now?
The grant, uh, for this form-based code is a hundred sixty thousand.
Hundred sixty thousand, and that exposed in September, which is why we're seeing this now.
Correct.
Okay, um, the buildings. You, there's three different codes that you have in there, and so I was going to ask if you could maybe just walk us through the three. I want to be, just make sure that I'm understanding them right. And the way that I'm looking at the neighborhood form-based code is maybe looking at somewhere over, um, if, if I can use my district, Diana, Kaya, uh, Mazetan, or by Altro, you know, more of a mix like that, a neighborhood form-based. Is that? Or do you have a better example that you would use for that? Like Diana and Yarmouth has a lot of variety.
Right, yeah, the neighborhood, uh, form-based code is really to, it's more that um, residential type uses, the residential type looking buildings. And, uh, bringing those buildings, have them, um, look like houses. Uh, the use doesn't really matter in a form-based code. There's still uses that, um, are permitted within each zoning district for a form-based code. But it's more focused on what that building looks like. So if it's a house, it can be, um, a single-family residence. You can have, um, a doctor's office or, uh, another type of use in there as well, but it's really, what does it look like? How does it feel?
So for example, on Monterey, if you're going southbound on Monterey from Dunn, on your right-hand side, there used to be something called the Flower Cottage. This was decades ago. I think I got my middle school boot in there. I don't know. Um, they, there's a large lot and there's, you know, there's homes there. It's set back really far. So I guess my question is, that'll be grandfathered in, of course, but what, um, where are we seeing that happening? Where else are we seeing, can you point out where we're going to have this neighborhood? What, what color is that there or the neighborhood form-based along our map here is what I'm trying to figure out.
It's the, it's the very light blue, so it's one of the, the smallest areas.
Okay.
But I would say if you're looking for a vision of what that would be, I would use Main Street from Monterey to the railroad trains. And those are smaller buildings, houses brought to the front, um, and that's.
So over by Taco Bell off of Church.
Okay.
And are those, if you're looking, is that over by where you're seeing the other parts of the light blue?
Yes, north of downtown, further north, yeah.
Very delight that stuff there. Okay, and then the other two is the corridor form-based and the urban general form-based. When I'm thinking urban general form-based, I'm thinking the corner of Cochrane and Monterey.
And Tenet in Monterey.
That's Monterey.
And Monterey, okay. And then the corridor treatment through the rest of the, the different areas along Monterey, which is more of downtown type of a feel. And so where exactly is the corridor form? How it's going to be, that's the majority.
Majority, well, correct.
Okay, perfect. Um, and then once, once, when do we think that we'll have this? I mean, is this going to be, if we approve this, is this what we're going to move forward with in thirty days? Thirty days after second read, after second reading, okay. Um, have we tied any different, uh, grants or anything to kind of looking to specifically where we'll be focusing on? Will we be focusing on the corridor form base? Will we be ta- focusing on the neighborhood? Is it just as projects roll in, interest rolls in?
Yeah, it'll be for any new development that comes in after the code adoption.
Okay, so we can see this as early as like forty-five day, oh, probably two months.
Yeah.
Okay. Great, thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember. Uh, we'll now open public comment. Any, any comments?
Doug Mearhead.
Good evening, Councilmembers, city staff, guests. My name is Doug Mearhead. I live in Morgan Hill. I want my south end of the Monterey corridor to be more attractive. I especially favor publicly accessible civic spaces to allow for neighborhood gathering. But since these will be on private property, who and how will rules be set for their use? I do not want such spaces taken over by business promotions. This is city council did a few months ago, when considering how to use new city-sponsored corporate spaces in downtown. I'm concerned with the transition for existing businesses and what you characterize as predominantly strip commercial. Going back as far as the general plan advisory committee, our business owners express concern that they're not receiving the same sort of consideration and support from the city, the downtown businesses received. Remember that businesses were forced out and others prevented from coming in as the character of downtown changed and rents increased as a result of the sale of RDA properties. Does the city have a plan for intermixing conforming and non-conforming businesses under the form-based code? I'd like to using the external municipal code chapter on reasonable accumulations. Which is a case-by-case consideration based on the building's resident and not customer or visitor. Form-based code has a steep category with entry stairs. We should want access for mobility impaired by default, as well as universal design for aging and place transitions. Before it went away, RDS was beginning to promote universal design. I would like to see more focus on mitigating heat islands as a result of paving asphalt walkways and trails and hardcapes civic spaces. Heat reports are telling of emergency room visits from burns touching metal and asphalt, which can be forty degrees hotter than air temperatures. Cold heat islands continue to warm the air throughout the night. On a smaller spa- scale, churches be screened or shaded to exclude insects, heat from the sun, or crying eyes. Finally, I find the sign standards to be excessive micromanagement. Please allow creativity. Thank you.
Thank you, Doug. Any other public comment?
Good evening. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Council, staff and community. My name is Nick Ashen. I am speaking tonight in my role as CEO and President of Morgan Hill Chamber of Commerce. As a way to provide a, a degree of context for recommendation, let's first acknowledge the agenda item brought to you the council tonight has undergone extensive research, discovery, analysis, interpretation, and community engaged involvement beginning in late twenty twenty. Importance of mentioning this is to first salute the amount of time, energy, and expertise inclusive of community engagement about to bear on this subject. As well as to highlight the importance of the decision in front of you tonight. Certainly, the extent and significance of fraction cannot be deeply outlined in the time allotted for public comment. However, I will try to summarize the chamber's recommendation to support the move to a form-based code based upon the following key position considerations. Ultimately, transitions future development of the Monterey corridor and the conventional zoning regulation approach have a strategically driven development structure. The form-based code model provides both consistency and continuity to the Monterey corridor with respect to building frontage and civic space standards that can be easily understood and adhered to by potential developers, residents and civic leaders. Institutions are established that will clearly represent neighborhood mixed use and business-oriented projects. Finalizes or resolves the need for immediate expansion of the city's priority development area that in turn requires a much-needed modernization to resisting downtown specific plan. It reduces a level of neutrality and clarity in all future development agreements. But most importantly, it's structured around physical form as its principal aim, which is transformative in our efforts to strengthen our resolve to create a community-centric corridor beyond the downtown district. Elevating our civic-minded efforts with respect to community, vibrancy, mobility, extension and identity. Simply stated, it serves as a forward-looking lens that will fully represent a sense of belonging for our community to live, work and play along the entire Monterey corridor. As mentioned earlier in my comments, a decision with importance in front of you tonight of our existing pipeline of in-flight development will not be required to adhere to these standards. Further delays in action will only extend and distract from the deck teams mentioned in my comments. As such, the Chamber of Commerce strongly recommends approval to move forward with the Monterey corridor form-based code zoning model. And thank you for the time to hear our voice tonight.
Thank you, Nick.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
No, no more speakers.
Okay, we'll close the public comment and bring it back for council discussion. Any comments?
Move to approve.
Is there a second?
Second.
By Councilmember Spring, all in favor? Aye. Any opposed? There are none, that passes. Uh, thank you so much. Uh, now for item fifteen, we are, uh, we are not going to do item fifteen.
We have.
Do I need to read the ordinance?
Yeah, I'm sorry, forgive me.
We're not going to do fifteen.
We're not.
Uh, we're on fourteen. Yes, I jumped to fifteen.
Yep, yep.
A little rusty.
Just on item fifteen, if the council wants to move forward with hearing that item, we're, we're prepared to continue to, to do that item tonight.
And I, I misspoke. We're not done with item thirteen yet, because all we've done so far is as first and second reading, we have to introduce the ordinance. Okay, please do.
What did you say?
We, we need a motion to introduce the ordinance amendment.
Move to introduce the ordinance. Can I do one and two? I mean, can I?
Already done, you've already done the way, you know, you did do three.
Okay. I'll second that.
We have a motion to.
By Councilmember, um, Martinez-Beltran, second by Councilmember Spring.
We introduce the ordinance by title and it's a roll call vote.
Thank you. An ordinance of the City Council of the City of Morgan Hill establishing chapter eighteen point two nine Monterey corridor form-based code within title eighteen zoning of the municipal code of the City of Morgan Hill and establishing the Monterey corridor form-based code regulating plan implementing a form-based code along the Monterey Road corridor, creating a vibrant mixed-use corridor that encourages walking and biking as envisioned within the City of Morgan Hill two thousand thirty-five general plan. Mayor Turner?
Yes.
Councilmember Spring?
Yes.
Levers?
Yes.
Borzoli?
Yes.
And Martinez-Beltran. Yes, thank you.
Passes. Very good. Item number fourteen.
Finance Director Datwin.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, uh, Councilmembers, Dak Mure, Finance Director, and with me tonight is, uh, Chris Murray, Public Service Director. We will send to you the item fifteen, the actually establishing the credit service fees for initial payment besides the one we have right now, which is the development fees and transit, uh, uh, occupancy tax T O T. Uh, currently, we have a fee about two, two point seven percent, which the council established in, uh, June, two thousand twenty-one and updated, uh, several months ago, uh, April two hundred twenty-three. And as I mentioned, this only applies to development fees and transit, uh, occupancy tax T O T payments made by credit card. And, uh, uh, that's a couple of minutes ago, the council direct staff to bring forward, uh, future agenda item, which is tonight, to continue charging credit card service fees for all other services besides those that we're currently charging right now. Um, through the two revealing, uh, just a summary, we have about six percent of our customers, or eight seven hundred, uh, pay their bills online, and of that, about four thousand customers pay with their credit card. Uh, the cost to seize, uh, is about hundred thousand dollars, uh, hundred, ten thousand dollars a year or equivalent to one point five percent in bank fees. We, we, because we don't charge the credit card service fees for utility, we qualify for low utility rate versus than normal credit card fees that we see have to pay if we can implement such a service fee. And those fees could range as high as three to five percent, depending on the credit card that the customers pay. Typically, uh, the processors or the merchant, a Visa, Mastercard, charge a higher fees if customers pay with those cards that would give them high reward or, uh, refund. As for credit card services, maturity payments are processed online, as Chris already had mentioned in the one responses from the council members question. And about one third of customers pay with the credit card. Uh, currently costs about close to two point nine percent or about twenty-three thousand dollars annually in bank fees. And for business licenses, uh, as you all know, uh, business license revenue is just a small portion of alternative revenue. Uh, with that, um, the majority of that process online and about two thirds of customers pay credit card. And costs about two point nine percent or about seventy-five hundred dollars annually. And, uh, why we're proposing, uh, also proposing establishing credit card service fees, is that the impact is that we expect higher customers to come to C Hall. As you all know, that use, right now, as mentioned, about sixty percent pay their U B bills online. And when we, you know, if the council decide to implement such credit fees, the expectation is that some people will definitely switch the payment method. I think that majority of that will switch to either pay that standard we made to pay online, uh, either through the e-check or just manage the checks to our lockbox services. But I would expect at least a small portion, a small percentage will come to C Hall and to inquire about the bills and pay the bills, uh, you know, at the, uh, desk. Uh, can, you can imagine like right now, about four thousand dollars, I mean, four thousand customers pay with credit card. Um, kind of side of that, come to C Hall on very specific day. As you all know, that when we send out a bill, uh, they typically do on a certain date, the tenth. And I'm not sure, but I think we could presume that majority of people will um, won't pay until closer to the due date. So you can imagine ten percent of the four thousand customers, about five hundred residents come to C Hall in one day. It would be, that'd be great chaos. Uh, with that said, uh, for credit card services, and because of majority of, uh, the uh, the client that we software we purchased that you know, any, uh, agency you want to pay with credit card or process a fee with credit card. So the software, uh, developers is created in a way that not to charge, uh, uh, credit card fees. So with the system we have right now, uh, and even when the one would be the staff is tried to explore to, uh, switch to a new system, the possibility of the new software that will accept credit card service fee is, uh, is, uh, remote. And in addition, uh, if we, you know, uh, think about the environmental, environmental considerations, uh, if we, you know, if we make such fees, we expect that more paperwork will be processed and we will generate more, you know, environmental waste. With that said, uh, staff recommendation is not to move, the council not to move forward with, uh, additional credit card service fees for the, for, uh, the mention we recently just mentioned. However, uh, if the city council decide to move forward, uh, is the council to open a closer hearing and adopt the resolution establishing, establishing credit card service fees for utilities, recalcation services, licenses, and all, all the payments made by credit card. Uh, in addition, we also ask the council to authorize the C manager to review and adjust the, the fees annually, uh, dependent on the, uh, uh, the expected increase in bank fees that we might potentially foresee in future. After all, as a, a, an additional, uh, happen, actually, of the council system to process any additional uh, increasing workload that we expect may come with the implication of credit card service fees. And that concludes my presentation and, uh, we will be happy to have any questions that you may have.
Council member spring.
Yeah, thank you. You sure don't like that idea, do you? Yeah, so, um, but you haven't convinced me yet, uh, why that's not a, an idea we should discuss at least. Uh, now, I, I know you, you checked with some of the neighboring communities, but, uh, San Jose Water is utility, right?
Uh, San Jose have two.
San Jose Water Utility Company.
Company, uh, yes.
It would be considered a utility, right? They do, they, they do charge a fee. I checked today. I double-checked and triple-checked, because last time I was wrong when I said the city of government. Uh, DMV, right? You pay, you can pay online and they charge it. And, and actually, most of them call it a convenience fee, because I think that's what it is. It makes it more convenient for us to, to provide a payment. And, and their public service is so bad that no one wants to go there, right? So we pay online, right? So this is something to keep in mind. Um, P G and E, right? Uh, is a utility. I can pay with credit card and I pay a convenience fee. Correct?
That's correct.
They, you should have mentioned that in the staff reports. I'm listening to those. The City of Campbell, uh, charged, the City of Fresno, the East Bay Municipality Utility Board, or whatever it's called, the whole East Bay. Uh, there, Pittsburgh, City of Morro Bay, City of Santa Barbara, City of Davis, they all charge convenience fee. And, and they think that's okay, but we think it's such a big deal. Years ago, and you agree, uh, when you would go to shopping centers, always long lines because people would write a check. Right? No one does that anymore. I haven't seen it in a long, long time. And, and I think the same happening here. The behavior changed so much. But we all, with youth, and really, it's a convenience now to pay online and use a debit or a credit card. Uh, so I disagree with your sentiment. I don't have data, but I think neither do you. Uh, that, that a lot of people now all of a sudden would stop paying with debit or, or credit cards online. And, and that, that would require, uh, such a bedtime possession. Uh, I don't think that's database. I think that's just a gut feeling at best. Correct?
Uh, I, I think, uh, is, uh, is, uh, council might establish that, uh, certain agencies, uh, that do charge, uh, either percentage credit fees or to fee-in fees. Uh, but, uh, as you mentioned in the staff report, all the agencies that we survey, at least in Bay Area here, uh, that do not charge such a thing.
Right, but did you, did you survey any of the ones I just mentioned? You kind of cherry pick the ones that don't charge it?
No, we don't cherry pick, council member. We just survey surrounding cities. We don't go survey our south or up north, but basically our neighbors. But you may be correct that, uh, uh, San, San Jose Water, which is, uh, uh, not municipal water like San Jose or Morgan Hill, uh, are. Uh, potentially, I would have surveyed that San Jose Water, they charge a fee or convenient fees. But regarding convenient fees, like, uh, I want to, I think, council member, um, you only, uh, uh, before I asked the question, yes, is it a possibility we could implement a, instead of percentage, a service fee could charge a convenience fee? Convenience fees is a flat fee, so one, rather one or two dollars. But as, uh, we have responded to the council, uh, members, uh, question, uh, inquiry, uh, we don't think it's, uh, applicable to, to everyone, because, uh, you convert the X dollar amount to percentage of dollar bill. Uh, people who consume less water or, uh, have less dollar amount bill would bear more front of the, uh, cost than the large, I'd say, commercial that pay thousand or even, uh, uh, ten thousand dollars in monthly bill.
Yeah, okay, so, but based upon what data do you come up with that this change might require another fifty percent employee role?
It's, it's just the expectation that, uh, that, uh, you know, when you implement something, some fees, you change the, uh, consumers' behavior in a way that, uh, I myself, like you mentioned, P G, even though it is, but it's not water. Uh, I wouldn't pay credit card, I would pay with somebody else. But, uh, there's no way, uh, you could go into any location close by and drop off the payment. And, uh, in, in my analysis, I'm not, we're not trying to say that, uh, a hundred percent that, uh, um, customers are paying credit card right now would, you know, comment to C Hall, but they definitely a good portion will, you know, uh, switch their method of payment. Whether it's e-check or whether they mail in the check or stop by C Hall or with a check or a cash. Uh, the example I mentioned is like just imagine ten percent of the four thousand, over four hundred customers decide to pay, uh, come C Hall and pay, drop, drop off C Hall with the um, cash and check, then would definitely increase the workload for our staff. And as mentioned, um, in addition to that small percentage, they could decide to send in the checks and then that would again create more side workload to, we have to open envelope, enter them, and then scan the check and then, you know, uh, et cetera. But again, it's, it's just a rough estimate. Uh, we don't know for sure, but we definitely believe, strongly believe that definitely increases side workload. Just based on the correlation between, uh, in the past year's effort, we tried to convince customers or lessons to go online, pay the you know, sign online, pay the bills. But because we seem, we seem to reduce, uh, number of customers come C Hall to inquire and make payments. That's the fact.
Right, but so yeah, also our finance director, and the reason I, I kind of suggested that discussion is again, the city kind of sponsors it over a hundred thousand dollars per year, right? Uh, that's a lot, that's a million dollars in ten years, right? Uh, that, that we wouldn't have to sponsor if we were to change the behavior. I, 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 I understand your concern, I just don't share them. Uh, so this is where I'm coming from. I think it's an opportunity to get some more revenue. You know, my water bill is what, seventy, eighty, ninety dollars because of a dollar or two. I'm not gonna come uh, send in a check or bring, come to City Hall to, to pay my tip. I won't. It's much more convenient to quickly do it online, right?
I agree with you, with that assessment. Again, uh, the example that I'm using is just a small percentage. Uh, I'm not saying a hundred percent of people will do such a thing.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
Thank you, thank you. Council member Levers.
Thank you. I, I have a question. If a person, uh, pays through their bank online, they get, you get an e-check.
That's correct.
Okay, are there any fees involved with that?
There's still some fees, uh, because H S fees, but, uh, we, we, uh, that's a fixed amount. I think currently, um, our processor charges about twenty-five cents or thirty cents. So it's definitely, uh, much lower than the credit card fees, which is equivalent to about like four or five dollars per, uh, payment.
It's better to go through your bank and get an e-check than it is to use a credit card. Yeah, that's my question. Thank you.
Anyone else? There being none, um. The I do know this, I have, well, this is about questions right now. So, um, yes, comments, we'll make those in a minute. The, um. Yeah, darn it. Okay, public comments. Do you have, and, and I don't, I mean, I get it, there's, there's, uh, yeah, it'd be great to have data. Uh, but I don't know that everybody tracks it to that level, even though you might speak to other agencies that talk about, yeah, we, we have certain fees here, we don't do certain fees there. And I agree, the convenience of, no one walks to P G and E to pay their bill or drives up and pays it at their office. What you're saying then, what is, what is the cost? And if we have to hire somebody out of time, what is, what is that cost to the city versus what we're dealing with here as far as fees?
The cost of a half empty of a council system too is about sixty thousand dollars a year.
So sixty thousand, we looked at, based on the numbers, if I saw them right, and you can pull those up if we did, look like a hundred and ten, twenty-three thousand and seventy-five hundred. Did I have those numbers right? Approximately?
Yes.
Okay, so that then is, uh, a cost of about, or savings possibly of, of about eighty thousand dollars.
If I can jump in, it wouldn't be the full eighty thousand, because the number Dak gave is only for the, uh, revenues for dealing with utilities. We didn't add that, it doesn't cover the cost of, if we had to upstep at the recreation facilities. Twenty-three thousand is included in the total.
Okay, so you're saying you would have to then possibly staff additional staff somewhere else?
Yeah, or, yeah, because we do all our transactions in person at the recreation facilities. They came in there.
So, so assuming that were true, ten employees then at that, at that rate would be approximately a hundred and twenty thousand dollars.
Yes, yes.
Correct, or you could take the twenty, the rec revenues aren't nearly as much, or the rec credit card expenses are only twenty-three thousand of that, that.
So you'd need some additional, okay. Okay, so we're, we're talking about here, the, the savings is a little more minimized as opposed to looking at, wow, there's a hundred and forty thousand dollars, plus on additional employees. That just brings that savings down to some degree. That's what I'm getting at, okay.
And, and, and not to mention that, uh, uh, the the change of consumers' behavior if we implement the fees, currently now, like you said, uh, four thousand customers pay with credit card. If we can implement a fees, potentially, half of that, those people will switch to other method. So that will reduce the potential revenue generate from four thousand customer to two thousand.
Okay, yeah, and I'm, I'm at the office nearly every day. And I see the activity that occurs at the office, and if suddenly twenty or thirty people showed up every day, yeah, and that's only one percent we're talking about, that would be overwhelming to the staff.
That's correct.
Yeah, I see that. It's just been a matter of, would that, would that suddenly be the case? And that's what we've got to try to figure out. Uh, okay, very good, that's.
Hi.
Go right ahead.
Um, is there anything if somebody is behind on their bill that they would not, I mean, the, I guess that's assuming if there was something, is there some, if you thought of if we did go forward with the fee, which I'm not saying that I'm in favor of, but what would happen to people who are already behind and they would be charged that fee as well, right? There's no way to, I guess. Um, you know, if somebody, if someone is late on their bill, that you could market or something so they wouldn't be charged that fee.
Uh, I don't understand your question. You said that if someone behind the bills, I don't.
If someone has passed you on their bill and they're trying to make a payment, and I'm guessing they're covering what they can to make their payment, but now they've got an additional fee on it, is there some way to, to tag that account or identify that account so that it would not have to pay a fee?
Um, yes, most, uh, we, we, credit card merchants or processor would prohibit that. We, it would be, uh, you cannot select and choose, uh, which customers, uh, pay the fees and which one not to charge the fees.
Okay, and then if you're paying now from your bank account, there's no fee. Is that right?
That's correct.
And then if you were to do a credit card payment, then there would be whatever the fee is that we would address, but I think what you're saying is that you're anticipating, I guess, I, I thought I heard you say fifty percent, but what do you anticipate? I know if there was a fee, I would just pay it from my, I'm gonna pay it from my account, I'm not gonna pay the credit card fee, right? So how many of those users do you anticipate would switch?
I, I would, uh, just, uh, yes, as I said, I would say at least fifty percent will switch immediately.
I'm gonna jump in here real quick if I can as well. I have an idea as to how many, how many of, of residents who are paying, how many of them would be, uh, maybe in the, uh, lower income bracket? And would be then forced to, again, they, they may be the ones who have to make some change in what they're doing. Is that, is that possibly true?
I, I don't have the, uh, number with me, but, uh, uh, and I, I really don't have the numbers, that how many of that, uh, low income, uh, you know, high, high, low-income entities pay, uh, credit card or apply all the means. Yeah, we don't have that, uh, we don't have the data.
And obviously, you guys you understand our concern as far as costs, cutting costs. We're all facing the, uh, conversations and decisions around revenue. Car dealerships is a good example. Um, so I don't look at what you're saying, and I don't think any of us take it lightly, that what you're saying that we're willing to absorb outweighs the cost that we might face down the road.
Right.
So, um, I don't know if I'm making myself clear, but I, I guess what I'm saying is I have empathy for what you're describing. You obviously know that we are trying to cut costs, but in doing so, sometimes we can cut off our nose to spider face. Is what I'm going to say.
Yeah, and the other thing I want to mention, based on council member Martinez Beltran's comment that made me think about it, is recoverability. And when cities started converting to online payments, sure typically credit card payments, um, we started to see that there were less delinquent accounts, there were less bounced checks. You know, and so because it's automatically taken out each month, you have more of a recoverability rate and less accounts that are overdue, basically.
Definitely, that could be a higher, uh, I mean, less lucrative, uh, payments, for sure. Uh, because, um, if you have sixty percent of people already sign up auto-paid, then you less worry about those sixty percent. Uh, because um you have sixty percent of people already sign up auto pay, then you less worry about those sixty percent and you only go after those forty percent.
Yeah, it's a good point.
If I if I could just add to you, the the other piece is you're paying that credit card fee, but you're not paying for all the staff that are. Doing the work to process a check or cash. And as we're looking at these smaller, the smaller numbers from what you looked at previously when we're talking about. You know, fifty dollar utility bills or ten dollar recreation classes. You're not gonna recover that much on the credit card fee, but if you're taking cash each time, then there's someone that's taking that cash in. Doing the closeout, transferring the money, and it's a lot more manual, and there's a lot more opportunity for errors with cash and checks. It then causes us to have to audit and do more things with it. So some of that savings goes away, right?
Good point too. Okay, thank you. Yeah, Councilmember Bojo.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. So uh I know I didn't chime in because I asked a lot of questions prior to the meeting, but in 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 what you're saying, um. This is, and and I totally understand it, that there is a system out there and banks have it, and probably your bank has it. It's called remote deposit. And it sits at your location and you just run the checks right through it and it's deposited at your desktop. So um the management of it, uh and and you get a reading immediately and it's deposited immediately. So possibly you may want to look on into that maybe for the next round of this, you know, maybe in the year, you know, when it's happening. Uh, and and I I I doubt if people are gonna pay more by cash. Because then they're gonna have to go to the bank and pull out the cash. They're probably more apt to pay by checks. If if I were to make a educated guess. So I I just wanted to chime in on my two cents on that.
I appreciate that. If there's some other comments, we'll go to a public comment. And do we have anybody? Pushing to make a comment?
We have no members of the public right now.
We'll close the public comment, bring back for council discussion. Any other comments by the council? Councilmembers bring.
Thank you, Simon. Wouldn't turn on here. We uh, you know, I understand the issue with recreational services, but they also stay in staff orders. It states only one third pays with credit cards, or two thirds don't. And with those two thirds, you already have a lot of the mental work that you trying to prevent. So you're kind of contradicting uh the goal a a little bit, right? We'd like to have it automated as much as possible. The I I I you 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 know, I I wanted to have the discussion, number one. I said, I think it was it was helpful. Uh, and again, I I have a Silicon Valley job, and we live in Silicon Valley. I want to have it as convenient as possible to make payments, right? I should be able to go to City Hall, show my phone and pay, right? We're not there yet. I think we're we're lacking with the kind of. Services we provide and the convenience of how quickly we pay. We're we're focusing on the old ways of doing it. They're not concerned that people go back to the old ways, whereas almost everyone has moved on, is doing things the new way. Uh, I I'm okay if we don't move forward, but I I'd like like, and I'm looking at city management and the financier. To take that back and see see what kind of services can we modernize. Need and improvements to get rid of that manual uh uh in involvement that you still have to a large degree, right? And I I think there's cost savings that could happen on staff side and then also uh eventually. Uh, then may maybe come back and consider that again a year from now.
And I I agree. I was gonna say the, because I think part of what we're, because we do, I we do have to modernize, we have to get to the point. I think what we. Maybe lacking is some data that would be helpful to us in this decision-making. And and by that, just simply mean. Maybe maybe over this next year, maybe I think where we're headed is, hey, we're gonna, we're gonna let it go for for some period of time, but. I don't know if there's a way we could do some tracking of some data that might be helpful as we go forward. When we do talk about technology, though, I think where we're challenged right now is not everybody has access to the technology we might. Want to try to get everybody to use, so that then becomes a bit of a challenge too. So. I'm with Councilmember Spring. I I I mean, I I can feel pretty good about, you know, not going forward with this. Uh, and maybe having future conversations about, you know, how can we change that? How can we maybe minimize costs and increase some potential revenue?
Okay, can I do that? We serve the right to bring it back again.
Yes, you can always reserve the right to bring this back as another item, you know, and and I would encourage rather than bringing this specific item back. Because you kind of hear sort of where we're heading, and I just, I don't know if this is the most efficient way for us to. Sort of increase revenue, you know, and so we're always working to figure out how to be innovative and to reduce expenditures, increase revenues. And so um we've heard you and and, you know, um, we'll continue to bring forward, you know, innovative ideas to help us. Um, but I just don't know if we would um necessarily want to bring back the very same item.
Got it. Can that make sense?
I have that purview. It was a point too.
Got it. That makes sense. Councilmember uh Martinez Beltran.
Um, I just think part of that that we need to think about is as we modernize and bring technology, there's a big cost with that as well that we need.
Yeah, true.
Back knowing if we're doing mobile phones, how we're doing, who's receiving that, if we're doing passing the check, all of that is gonna cost as well.
And and I would be remiss if I, Chief, wherever you are, Chief Palsgrove and our I T department, if I didn't um state that we also have to be very. Um cautious from a cybersecurity perspective of any sort of innovative means that we offer. I mean, it'd be great to. Come up and pay by a Q R code, but is that safe? You know, we'd have to make sure we're researching all of that.
I think Chief has plenty of time on his hands.
We want to make a, uh, let's see, so we are um just where we had on this item here.
Well, I'll make a motion not to pursue this at this time.
Thank you. And Chris, I don't know if you heard him, we do take Apple Pay, so if that makes you feel better from a technology standpoint.
But he said only one third pay with credit cards. Right? Oh, no, I didn't. The uh, that report says one third of recreational. With credit card.
Okay, so we have a motion.
Second.
At a second. All in favor?
I'll take me later, Chris.
Any opposed? That none, that 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 passes not to go forward. So thank you for that. So item fifteen, council, I just ask, I I do, does anybody? Do we? Do we need to hear this? Uh, I think what what we learned in the previous discussion is that uh staff's gonna come back with some. You're gonna have another conversation around the.
Come back then too, I mean.
At that same.
That's the will of the council if you want to hear that tonight or when we bring back.
Are we willing to let that go tonight?
Yeah.
So let let what go. So it's item number fifteen, it's um.
Giving the design guidelines?
Oh, yeah.
This is pertaining to the.
Yeah, 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 we can. Yeah, okay. I just didn't understand that.
You know, we need to formalize it, or you're okay with just, yeah, we're all good. That's, well, it's it's not a motion to continue to update certain because we don't know when we're coming back, so.
There might be someone in the stuff like.
Okay, okay, we'll do. Is there any, yeah, is anyone in the public has comment?
Look me ahead.
Thank you.
Good evening again. I would have been extremely annoyed if you had decided to pass over this item at this late date. If there were planning commissioner comment about safe walking within a site and and news reports about extreme temperature effects on E V batteries. Have suggested and or covered walkways and vehicle display and parking areas. Other vehicle areas could also support solar panels. Keeping with the extreme heat theme, we should also focus on larger areas of a hardscape as heat islands. On a different topic. And you just referred to it obliquely in your previous item. During the planning commission discussion, commissioners and staff appeared quite comfortable with online ordering and status updates at dealerships by text messages. It appears to me that some of us have already forgotten about the negative impacts of the digital divide that we repeatedly heard about during the COVID years. Thank you.
Thank you, Doug. You have a comments?
Nick Gage.
Good evening again. Nick Gage representing the Chamber of Commerce. As we stated support in the June twenty-first council meeting regarding the then proposed administrative office zoning amendment. I admit so, recognizing that all ordinance amendments put front of the planning commission and the city council have many factors that must be first assessed, evaluated for fit. And then socialized with community. Ultimately, these decisions must be made on behalf of protecting the character and the values of the city of Morgan Hill. Successful execution of the city's economic and fiscal responsibilities, equitable standards of performance on ensuing development agreements. They went all balanced and refined by community discussion input. An example of that happened tonight. Our intention in support of the administrative office zoning amendment was to offer a go-forward approach. Supporting the planning commission and staff ordinance recommendations to initiate a process to develop a roadmap of key design guidelines to incorporate it into any given auto model development agreement. While ensuring a community-centric strategy respective of the needs in the residence who reside in close proximity of any given parcel under review and consideration. Auto model, auto model guidelines presented today for review and consideration. Rather than established based on evidence-based industry best practices, subject expert analysis and recommendations. Final commission review and most importantly, community insights and input. As requested by the council, the proposed design guidelines cover key areas of design and fit. By consistency and continuity for any auto model development. Will serve as additional leverage component to our existing regulations and guidelines in the Morgan Hill Municipal Code and Architectural Review Handbook. After further review by the Chamber of Commerce Board, we recommend moving forward with the auto model guidelines for vehicle dealership. Dealerships respectfully requesting a modification to the document. That will include operational restrictions on customer test drives, including any traffic in residential zone neighborhoods. Thank you for your considerations and votes tonight.
Thank you, Nick.
And no further speakers.
Thank you. We'll close the public comments. And so you guide me through this, Don, if you would.
We, so I think it's still up to the council if you want to move forward with the discussion, um, based on what you heard from. Or do you want to continue the item?
So we do have a consultant here this evening, um, that's prepared to walk through the item, um, but we can also reschedule it for when we.
Yeah, I I'm I'm uh.
Okay, I'll make a motion to table it that uh. Time uncertain.
Yeah, that's my council member spring second by council member Martinez Beltran. All in favor?
I'd like to make a a a motion of substitution. And that is. To put a timeframe on what the previous motion is, uh, not to a time uncertain. So for an example. Sixty days. I'm just saying for an example. I I just don't feel if we push this out to next year, it's gonna do us any good. So I would like to uh make a motion and Christina, if you could tell me if sixty days is appropriate, if um. Forty-five days, if more than that, I just I just think we have to be specific on on this.
I think I we would appreciate the flexibility to um bring it back before the end of this calendar year.
Okay, so the motion then would include.
Well, I I would consider a friendly amendment if that we're okay with you to.
Sure.
To incorporate that. So instead of to table it, uh, to table it. Then it's come back before the end of the year.
Yeah, it's still to date uncertain, but but within this calendar year.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, so I get that's acceptable to the second.
That friendly motion.
Okay, well, we're all good. Okay, uh, all in favor?
I.
I. Any opposed? None? That passes five zero. Thank you. Item sixteen, receive the monthly data update. Come on back.
We just can't get enough down.
This is why they pay you the bucks that.
Yeah.
I love you guys too.
Good evening again, Mr. Mayor, councilmembers, uh, Dr. Lou, Francis, and Richter. Uh, different topic, uh, different agenda item item time. This time presents you with the monthly budget update and then gives you the preliminary result of our past year performance, uh, F Y, uh. Uh, this will be ended at two and thirty, two hundred and twenty-three. Uh. And I will start off with the general fund, uh. Based on the premium number, uh, our revenues came in slightly better than our expected, uh, two to million versus three one point seven. So uh this was less uh than in past years, but still better than we had expected. On a financial size, uh, we did come in uh much more than we expected. Uh, we came at fifty-six point one million versus fifty-eight point two. Uh, about, you know, two point one million by the turn, the better revenues and uh expenditures, we net better about two point four million. But of that two point four million dollars, I'm two two point four million dollars on the better side. We already uh built in the budget of about one million dollars, uh, expectation level, one million dollars savings. So the net net uh more than the budget is about one point four millions. Now, the bottom service is fun, uh, even though the revenues coming uh slightly uh uh lower than we uh had forecasted. But uh we are offset by the, you know, uh, lower expenditures, so the net impact to the fund is zero. So the fund did come and operate at the, you know, uh, at even. Our enterprise funds, uh, the revenue came in better than budget, uh, eighteen point one million, but versus then seventeen point six million. Uh, for the wastewater came in much higher, uh, of uh fifteen point three uh versus fourteen point eight or half million dollars better. Um. Uh, but but the bottom line is, uh, both of the funds on the expenditure side, they came in uh much lower than we had forecast. Uh, for a lot of upgrade funds, um, we transfer, uh, expect to transfer five point five million dollars to capital projects funds versus three point five million dollars. Um, we have the policies that any excess funds in uh enterprise operated funds will be transferred to capital projects funds to. Uh, implement the uh capital improvements to um other man of those uh system. Uh, for wastewater, uh, transfer is to be uh expected to be four four million dollars uh as we expected or as we budgeted. Uh, as a result of the general fund, um, um, general fund uh performance, you can see in the updated forecast. Uh, the unaudit operating number uh to give us a a higher fund reserve than we had uh made you back in uh. Uh, early May, uh, at sixty percent versus fifty-five percent. Um, but again, um, the the council policy is that any budget savings, in this case, the net is one point four million dollars. Seventy seventy percent of those one point four million dollars will be transferred to uh to fund other priorities. Uh, uh, C I P for street improvements and uh for funding of the uh accepted equipment. Uh, as well as park maintenance. So seventy percent of the one point four will be transferred. And the other thirty percent will go back to reserve. So the net impact is uh slightly better than we had forecast in the uh um back in May. But the bottom line is that we, because of the some general fund savings, we will be able to fund some of the uh unfunded liabilities that I just mentioned. And that concludes my uh short presentation. I haven't answered any question that uh the council may have.
Any questions? Councilmember Spring.
Yeah, I'm still awake, so. My answers. The the um, can you go back to slide number five? Yeah, so so. In 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 May, the the um, the general fund forecast was fifty-five percent, right? And and now it's at sixty-two percent, that's seven percent different, which is great. But then why why does it within a year drop to almost where it was before?
Uh, one, uh, there's two reasons. Uh, one is because of the co- co- over encompasses. But uh we may expand in F Y twenty-three, will be moved into F Y twenty-four. So the expenditures will be hired in F Y twenty-four.
Can you give me an example?
Yeah, that example is uh right now in finance, uh, we go through the process of implementing a new financial system. Uh, we have about seven hundred thousand dollars uh currently encumbered for that endeavor, and that has not been. Honestly, it is the start out with about eight hundred thousand. We spent a hundred thousand, but remaining six or seven hundred, six hundred thousand dollars will be moved into next fiscal year. Uh, so the expenditures did not occur in the F Y twenty-three, they will be incurred in F Y twenty-four. So you have expect higher expenditures in F Y twenty-four versus F Y twenty-three. In addition, um, as you mentioned, the um policy policies is that any general fund budget savings, which in this case is one point four million dollars. Seventy percent of that will be uh allocated to uh or transferred to for uh street safety. Uh, park maintenance and uh and um safety equipment uh replacement fund. So that's why you see uh uh. A reduction basically in the fund balance, but uh in a good way that because we will, because since we we have the extra savings. We'll be able to fund some of the priorities that the council has set out.
Okay, it it, thank you. I think I understand. So some of. Some of the money that we didn't spend last year got now allocated to certain funds, those funds. Uh, accounts.
Yes, true part. If you look at the uh statement in financial statement, probably fifty-six point one million dollars expenditures. I think uh around two point eight million dollars, that is final conferences. However, over in Denver.
And sent, yeah.
So that's one got uh did not include in the unaudit number, but we we will be include in the uh amended F Y twenty-two, twenty-three, twenty-four. That's why you see uh.
Right, but but it's a fair to say so like for street maintenance, so is is that a fund?
Right, but but it's a fair to say so like for street maintenance, so is is that a fund or or? The finance term is a fund. So so there was some money got added to the fund. That's correct. Yeah, so we don't have a slide, but that is shown, right, that there should be more money in the fund than than in May, right? That's correct. But this is slides, just like you mentioned, just general fund. So you can see the the higher uh. Because I think you need to get credit, right? You did such a great job managing our money so that we actually will have more funds available now because of 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 that great job to for for a street maintenance. That's correct. Right? That's correct. But I I probably next next month or when whenever we come back, show show. This is great, right? Show that, right, that we that that money, we were able to add more money. Yeah, basically, it's because the council set a policy that, you know, we have, if we have extra money, then we should set aside for some of the uh priorities. Uh, so. Okay, that that to me then that explain explains why the curve didn't really change. We wouldn't have done that, then the curve would have flattened out. That's correct. If we did not transfer the excess reserve, then then we we would uh expect a higher uh reserve level in general fund. And thank you. Okay, that explains it. Thank you. Great, great job, by the way, yeah, last year.
We need to give credit to the council. Nicely done.
Yeah.
Other questions?
One was asked here.
I'm sorry. You're up. Please go right ahead.
Um. It I had it highlighted here. It was on recreation and just talking about how now it seems like it's performing better on a net basis. So or do we feel like that's going to be continue to be the trend then?
I think so, too. Uh, definitely this year was definitely helped by the uh increase in the facility rental. Uh, we've seen a definitely uh higher facility rentals and, you know, people coming back on rentals. But the story is the we're not at the level that we want to see, definitely not at the level it's into our nineteen before the COVID, but definitely we head that way.
Has voices being at the community center helped us then?
Yes.
Great. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, council member. If there are any other comments here, we'll open the public comment. Anyone wishing to speak on this item?
I have no speakers.
Okay, we'll close the public comment, bring it back for council discussion. As original council discussion, I would entertain uh a motion to accept.
Motion to approve.
I have a motion from Councilor Borjoli.
And there's no action in this one.
I'm into. Okay, we'll just accept it. That'd been a formal motion to accept. It is therefore accepted.
I'm back.
Nicely done, Dan.
Thank you.
Okay, item seventeen, appoint voting delegates to the twenty twenty-three Cal Cities uh annual conference. Who will do the presentation on that? Christina?
I'm looking at Kim to see if she wanted to do it or if she's looking for me to do it.
Come on, Kim, you can do it. Go, Kim.
Wow. Just one second. Would I kick it off and then you can add anything that you want? That'd be great. So the item coming before you is for the annual League of California Cities Conference. And so the conference this year is in September. And so part of it is uh our city, along with other cities, need to appoint a voting delegate. And to two alternate voting delegates. Um, and so the delegates uh represent the city. And the meeting is on Friday. And typically, what has been done is the mayor acts as the voting delegate. Mayor Pro Tem is one of the alternates, and then we choose another individual to serve as an alternate. Um, however, with that said, the council could choose to have others, you know, be in that seat. What's interesting this year is there is not yet a resolution that is being brought forward for consideration. However, up until September eighteenth, I think, there could be a resolution that comes forward. In that event, the delegate would still have to vote on behalf of the city. And so staff would work with the delegate and our alternates to review the resolutions and just to make sure that, you know, we um share with you our recommended vote based upon the the priorities of the council and past direction. Um, so right now, we're just asking for you to um bring forward names for the delegate and the two alternates. And then um direct our clerk's team to complete and forward the voting delegate form to Cal Cities.
Anything you want to add to that? Not nicely done.
No, thank you, Christina.
Very good.
Thank you, counsel.
Yes, yeah, I will not be available as delegate. I will uh I will um head home uh for another commitment after the breakfast to what is it, the peninsula breakfast?
Peninsula breakfast, yes.
Okay, yes, okay. My 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 seat opens up. Okay, very good.
Well, I'll throw my hat in if you don't know anyone else wants to do it.
As the alternate?
I will.
As an alternate?
Yes.
Okay.
Well, I mean.
And I will certainly accept the, yes, I would accept the role of uh being the voting delegate. So.
I have been the voting delegate before, so I know what it's all about.
Okay, got it. So uh, do we need to formalize that with a vote? Uh, someone make a motion?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, I make a motion to to well, the the mayor is is the delegate and the alternates will be uh my colleague Lebers and my colleague Martinez Beltran.
Clear second?
And if you want to just include in that recommendation to direct the clerk to complete and forward the voting delegate form to the Cal Cities.
Oh, I'm sorry. And 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 that too, yeah.
And that too. Thank you. Second by number Borjoli. All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? And being none, that passes five zero. Uh, and then item number eighteen, approve amendments to policies, uh, number ninety-seven zero one and one eighty, one eighteen dash zero four, moving references to the standard code of parliamentary procedure. Don, are you gonna?
I will break it away. This will be, this will be a a brief presentation because I think um, you can read the, you can read the two hundred and fifty page book, or you can read the six page um, rules and determine which um council is in favor of. I think um we brought this forward um because we um for several reasons. One is um councils never, in my experience, in my seven years here, never followed the Sturgis um code of parliamentary procedure um with the with some minor exceptions. Um, at least not to the letter. And there's so much about that
Yeah.
uh procedure that we couldn't follow because it violates the Brown Act. Um, so um, we what precipitated this was an issue on counting votes. And if you look to Sturgis's code of parliamentary procedure, um, the first thing that gives you is an example of counting votes. There are two hundred members of the legislative body. Um, we have five. Um, so I have um Rosenberg's rules, which we're proposing, is what um many cities use a modified version of Roberts Rules of Order. Um, some ma- many other cities, um, I think at last count, you know, the majority of cities use Rosenberg's or some form of Rosenberg's. We're the only city that I can find in California that uses um the Sturgis rules. So um, and uh, I think um Mr. Merhead repeats what he said last time because he hit it on the head when he spoke about this when we came before. But um, we're recommending the Rosenberg's rules because they're tailored to a five-member city council and they, we think that they're much easier, I think much easier for the council to follow. Um, we have the same caveats that we have in the policies, which gives the mayor authority to control the meeting because that's really part of what's incorporated into Rosenberg's rules. And also because Rosenberg rules, like the Sturgis rules, will require a second before a motion gets voted on. And we think um that practice should continue.
Okay. Very good. Thank you. Any questions? Councilmember uh Levers?
Oh, thank you. Um, I just want to be clear on when someone votes abstain. That what I read is that means it's a no.
That is, under Rosenberg's rules, that's correct.
Yeah, and is there any reason why a person cannot vote abstain? I mean, why would somebody?
So the the main reason somebody wouldn't sort of law disfavors abstentions, but it doesn't prohibit this fen- abstention abstentions. Um, but primary reason why somebody should abstain is if it's a public hearing, but um for whatever reason, the council member missed part of the public hearing, then and that council member shouldn't isn't, if if there's not a conflict, the council member can stay and listen to the debate. Shouldn't participate and should abstain when the vote comes out if they haven't heard because the I'm sorry, I'm gonna miss, well, probably we missed this, but it's, you know, the the person who besides should hear the evidence. So if that would be a reason for abstention, um under common law, a conflict would be a reason for an abstention, but under the Brown, under the um that they call it over there, six, the Political Reform Act, you actually have to leave the room. So you're forced to not vote.
Right.
But so there are, there are legitimate reasons for abstention. Um, abstaining as a protest vote is not something that's favored, but it's also not illegal.
Okay, it is that the same as it has been, but going with this news.
Under Sturgis, the Sturgis rules say that anybody is allowed to abstain. And that's when it gets into the what happens with your two hundred votes. Um, um, and so Sturgis says that everybody, everybody's allowed to abstain, but they don't say how you count that vote. Roberts Rules of Order um says that you count it as a vote with whatever the majority is. So if it's
Okay.
in the case we had where we have two, we only have four council members present, we have two yes votes, one no vote and one abstention. Um, that would qualify as three votes that are necessary to pass an ordinance um under Roberts rules, but I don't think that's a good practice either.
Okay, but this one, it's just an automatic no.
It's an automatic no.
Thank you for your clarification.
Councilmember Borjeli, did you have?
Um, I I, you know, again, I I wasn't in favor of this. I I said it at the beginning, but what what would be the um because I've always done Sturgis. So what would be the major changes and the uh negatives in going with Rosenberg?
I don't think that it is going to make a big difference for the way that you operate because we we ignore two-thirds of what's in Sturgis's book. Um, and it really comes down, I think the big change and the thing that gets used to is the names of the different motions um are different. But council doesn't, I think, with the exception of you, Councilmember Borjoli, most council members don't use the names that Sturgis lists anyway. So it's really, you know, the the advantage of Rosenberg is you have three motions. You have a motion, you have a motion. You have a motion to amend, and you have a motion, um, and you have a substitute motion. Um, and you make one of those three motions. Um those are the three motions. Council makes anyway. You don't make any of the other many, many motions that are available under Sturgis. Um, so I don't see I don't see, other than, um, it's a new set of rules that we have to adopt, you know, that have to. Otherwise, I don't see a negative. That's really the only negative is a new set of rules that we have to adapt to.
Which fortunately are only, you said eighteen pages?
No, six.
Six pages versus two hundred and fifty.
Yeah, yeah.
As member.
So I'm sorry, will you, will you supply us a a new book so we can review it?
I I mean, I sent the link to the website where it's listed. Um, if you can purchase a book, um, it's fourteen dollars, or you can print it from the web. It's literally six pages. You can print it from the website, too, or we can do that for you. Okay. I should say it's six pages of text. There's like a couple pages. Got it?
Okay, very good. Thank you. Councilmember Martinez Beltran?
Thank you. Um, I I agree that with my colleagues, I don't I would like to see, I mean, this is, these are the rules that bind us and bind the council. And I just feel like this seems very, um, I would like to see us maybe at a workshop. Look at if you feel that Sturgis is just not a great fit, that we look at Roberts rules as well as Rosenberg rules and understand what the differences between them, even Sturgis rules, and and know, you know, what we are choosing to be bound by. I think that 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 seems um like like a good way for us to go forward rather than just saying, oh, well, we're gonna, you know, we'll just change this and I would like to be educated on that so that as we're making a decision, uh, Sturgis has been in on the books as long as that I've been here for the planning commission. And I just think it would be a good practice for us to take some time and.
Let me make the change, if I may jump in here real quick. If we did make the change, would we apply this across the board with all of our emissions as well?
If our um only the council and the planning commission have adopted a formal rules of procedure.
Okay.
Which makes sense because those are the two commission, the commission is, the commission is the one commission where they make um, where they have, as I judicial hearings, where they're making formal decisions on um applying the law. So where they need that formal procedure.
Got it. Okay.
Um, and so the proposal would be to change it from both. And I would say, I will say, yes, last night, um it's council, planning commission left it to council to tell them which rules of procedure to use, but last night, um Ms. Carmen did present to the planning commission that this was a change that the council was going to be considering. And um, I don't believe there was any negative feedback, or at least I
Okay.
haven't come back to me.
I think simpler, I've read that book. It's it's, yeah, it's pretty confusing. So uh, so with that, though, maybe.
Is that something you could do for us, Don? Would you be the person to do that for?
I think, I think, I mean, uh, my my recommendation is, it's like, I will tell you, um Ms. Michelle Bigarow and I, we've had these kind of questions on how we count votes. Um, I kind of throw our hands up and say, we'll just make something up because we can't figure out Sturgis and how we apply a formula that relies on a two hundred member panel to how we deal with five votes, other than just dividing by that um, that um so our our preference would be to try to make the change sooner rather than later, but then with the idea we could come back and talk about Roberts. Um, neither the commission nor the council actually follows Sturgis.
Okay, is it, is it possible then, based on what the council was asking for, is uh at our September twenty-seventh meeting? Set some time aside. In the meantime, we just keep going forward like we've been doing.
Yeah, and I will tell you, um, I I want to like I it's a big ask only because this is two hundred and fifty pages. This is the simplified version of Roberts Rules of Order.
Yeah.
So um Roberts Rules of Order makes, you know, is the complex version of Sturgis, which is already too complex.
And I don't think, remember, even when Martinez Beltran is asking for everything on on Sturgis that, you know, we're not going to do that, we weren't, we weren't already doing. I think it's more of like in practice, if we look at a regular council meeting, what differences are we going to see? And I think the answer is not a whole lot.
Yeah, I think if you're, but if you're asking us to do a comparison on Roberts Rules of Order, no city, I mean, there are cities that claim to use Roberts Rules of Order, and then they explain what it means, and they don't use Roberts Rules of Order. Um, because they only use a very small portion of it. Um, so if you're asking for a comparison between Sturgis and Roberts Rules of Order, I'm not an expert on Roberts Rules of Order, and I'm
Maybe that portion that's used, that's typically used, maybe you could, you know, just lay it out for us.
Are you, are you asking for a comparison of a a a sample of all three of them?
Yeah, it's, I don't, you don't have to write it, you know, you have to.
Is that something we could do in fifteen?
Those years here, I'm just saying.
And I think the point being is, what I'm asking for, hey, can we do this in fifteen minutes? We don't have so many hours that particular night, and I don't want to spend an hour on this. If we could do it in fifteen minutes.
A very high level.
Yes, and I, which is, I think, all you're really asking for.
Okay, good. Yeah, I I just want to comment that
everyone in the world likes choices. And you're you're only giving us one choice.
Right.
So we would, at a high level, like to see
Yes.
what's the three are, okay? Very high level. And if you get it to us ahead of time, we can read it, okay?
Oh, wow.
We don't have to have that long of a, you know.
If you want us, I mean, Roberts Rules of Order is an expensive book. If you want us to buy that just for a discussion. Um, it's not, well, there's their old versions online.
Well, here's, here's what I suggest we do. We'll let you determine how that presentation goes, and we want it done in fifteen minutes.
Yeah.
So it will be very high level. It'll give us enough information to really make a decision on what we want to do going forward. Is that if we can make it, because like, because like, you know, want to spend a ton of time on that. We have other things to.
I would have been been okay to to go with with what you recommend.
I would be. I would probably too, actually, so.
I'll be still gonna vote for this.
Well, if he makes a motion.
Yeah.
I I'll second it because I I'm on, I'm on board with you.
But they all want to continue.
We can do both things.
I would go with you guys.
Okay, so I'll make a motion.
We haven't heard from the public yet, and I hope Mr. Merhead has already commented on this, so I may.
Fair enough.
Okay, I'm with you. Okay, so we'll open, if my other comments will open public comment?
Mayor Head?
Do we have anybody?
You have one, nobody.
Oh.
I have to say, you just have ruined my evening. This I have to wonder if the people that are raising questions about Rosenberg bother to read the six pages to see if it covered your needs. This whole Sturgis and Roberts is just anyway, this is my prepared comments that were so optimistic, and I was so happy to win my second process change in ten years. I agree with.
I think you're gonna still get it.
Well, yeah. I agree with staff that the stages code of parliamentary procedure is inappropriate for small government bodies such as our five-person city. I agree with staff that the stages code of parliamentary procedure is inappropriate for small government bodies such as our five-person city council and our city commissions. A better choice is staff's recommendation to adopt Rosenberg's twenty-eleven rules of order endorsed by the League of California Cities. They're short enough that decision makers can effectively use them and the public can understand them. When supervisors submit and return to county government after serving in Sacramento, don't stop presenters and ask them to explain an acronym or term not familiar to the public. Saying that the public has a right to try and understand what our public servants are saying and doing to us. Should not our rules for running small, successful meetings for the benefit of the public be held to the same standard? We get a chuckle from the staff report resource impact section. We learned that, quote, "Staff and council will need to become familiar with the new procedures, which will require the minimus resources," unquote. I hope you too appreciate the city attorney's sense of humor. Thank you.
Thank you, Doug. Uh, if there's no other comments, we'll close the public comment.
No more speakers.
Back to the council.
Right, I'll make a motion to go ahead with staff's recommendation.
I'll second it. We have a motion in the second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
That's us three to two. We may have to, uh, adjourn the meeting in your honor tonight. That's right. I want to hear you complaining for another ten years, okay? All right, so with that, we're going to move to any, uh, future council-initiated agenda items. Anybody? There being none, we will, uh, I'm sorry.
I don't have an agenda item, but I do have a question. When is our next meeting? Is it just the workshop that's coming up? Next meeting is the first Wednesday of September, which is September the sixth. And then we have a regular, regular meeting. We will not have a meeting on the twentieth because that's the first day of the annual League of California Cities Conference. And we will have a meeting on September twenty-seventh, um, and that is our goal-setting workshop, um, and that is going to start at five o'clock. We may have some regular business items, but the goal is to just have the whole workshop.
Thank you.
Yep, thank you. Uh, we are going to be moving to closed session. Um, Mr. Lockman, can you please read, uh, the closed session into the record?
Thank you, Mayor. The council will be adjourned to closed session on one item of anticipated litigation significant exposure under government section five four nine five six point nine, sub B, one case.
Is there any public comments?
I have no speakers.
We will adjourn to, uh, closed session.